The proposal I find would be a negative and detrimental change.
Ms. Ray.
Yes, sir.
My pleasure.
Okay. Just, I would just ask the council to think hard about what this means in terms of the existing communities.
Ms. Ray, that is in your time.
Okay, thank you.
Rich Stewart, J.B. Chavis, Dawn Fittis.
My name is Rich Stewart. I'm a retired school teacher. I was also a locomotive engineer at one time, which is how I became a school teacher. I was injured. I'm concerned about the proposed farm development and what it would mean to the students of Westminster near on that farm. The Flynn Elementary, 467, Mesa Elementary, 368, Shaw Heights Middle School, 566, Sunset Mesa Elementary, 371, Crown Point Charter Academy School, 476, Melby Christian School, 324. There's 2,572 students contiguous to the farm. This doesn't include the high school and those high school drivers, which I know very well from being a high school teacher, who are coming up roaring up the streets adjacent to the farm. These are just the schools that are adjacent to this farm. There's others that are close in this Westminster school. There's also daycare centers and others nearby. I'm especially concerned about the schoolchildren, the parents, and the staff leaving this school. I watch them come and go, and as you probably know, middle school students aren't necessarily the most focused group of human beings that you'll be working with. And neither are the dozens of cars with parents, anxious parents looking for their kids driving around, mostly on Lowell and Shaw Boulevard where I live. It should be renamed Shaw Drives. That's another question that I intend to come in with the traffic department and the police department. I watch these kids come every day, and it's a dangerous combination as it is now. It's frightening. I watch the kids come and go, the parents come and go, and I cannot imagine what life there will be for the teachers, the school, the students, little kids, elementary schools, middle schools surrounding the farm if it's filled with thousands and thousands of people. I'm not exaggerating either, the numbers, you know the numbers, that will be dangerous for the students. And I really think it can, it may be a life and death issue for
Ms. Stewart, that's your time, sir.
and the community. So I ask that we reject the proposal. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is J.B. Chavis. As you can see, I don't have notes, so I'm just going to speak to you with my heart. I am in favor of this. I heard someone yesterday saying, one of the councils says, "Why should we do this? Why should we leave or vacate? Not do anything." I can give you examples. I want to give you my opinion as a father, homeowner, and as a business owner. This place, I live right in front of it. My house is always infested with rats. In the summer, if you see rats, see, only the people that actually live in front of it, they can actually know what I'm talking about. A lot of people, they live across the street or three, four blocks on the other side. My house is always infested with rats. Out this summer, wild animals. There's always wild animals. I got kids, I got dogs. See, for me, a development in front of my house, it will be perfect. As a homeowner, my house, it will get equity. Not only my house, my neighbor, my other neighbor. See, I think economy and community is one of the first things. Business owner, I would love to get involved in this. There's nothing better than to get out of my house and see the place where I work. I travel two, three hours a day, and it's always traffic. People say, "Oh, traffic, traffic, traffic." Yes, it's always traffic. Denver is infested with traffic. We already know this. But we have to think about the future. Not only, they say traffic, okay, we're going to have traffic, we're going to have more cops, there's going to be more protection, we're going to have cars, we're going to have more cops, tickets. The city is going to make money, I will make money in equity. And I'm not the only one. The owner of the farm, they have the right to sell. They have the right to have a future. They've been doing this for over 100 years. Why he's not going to be allowed to do it? He, they probably have plans. The farm, it's not a good business. They can do something else. I respect their decision to sell. I respect, well, failed markets because they wanted to bring a community, more people leaving here. Thank you.
Brian Dias, Dias and C.C. Glider, Pat Bird. They were some diocese already testified last night.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. I suspect that my badge might give my position away, but for the record, let me say that I am not, I repeat, not in favor of the Uplands development as presented. It's not that I am anti-development or anti-developer. I've been very supportive of the downtown and the five focus areas as defined by the comprehensive plan. I've been equally vocal to go slow on the nine opportunity areas, which according to the latest edition of the city edition are now character areas. And I quote, "Nine clusters of land with vacant sites for development potential have been presented for testing land use concepts. Uplands as presented does not appear to be a test of a new land use concept." You got your visual last night, Country Club Village, the connections, Tuscany Trails, no new land concepts there. This unique property, not only for Westminster but for the Front Range deserves better. It is the historic epicenter of Westminster from which the city got its name. For many of us, it is the Westminster, it is to Westminster what the Flatirons are to Boulder. Others here this evening will make clear the significance of the land more eloquently than myself. Others will challenge how Uplands does not dovetail with the comprehensive plan. What I find most curious and concerning is that only three out of the five parcels that make up Uplands are under consideration. I fear someone has called an audible. This play is designed to establish a precedent. We all know case law is established by the outcome of formal cases, or former cases, sorry. If you approve the proposal, it will transfer future decisions onto parcel A, the crown jewel of the farm. It will become a form of de facto law. Now, once at any of the neighborhood outreach meetings or even last night, as individual, was Uplands presented as individual or singular propositions? There's always been a total package by out of pocket. I'm not sure if anything less makes economic sense for the developers. I sincerely believe this proposal as is is not in the best interest of the citizens of Westminster. It's certainly not approving or protecting the natural environment of Westminster. So I urge you to vote no until such time that an acceptable resolution of all plots can be satisfied. It's my greatest hope that you clearly understand the choices you are charged with. Let's be smart about this. Let's be strategic. Let's be creative. Let's be wise. We can do better. We have to do better. Thank you.
My name is Carolyn Glider. I've lived in the Shaw Heights neighborhood for 50 years. I've seen a lot of changes. When I was, when I first moved to Shaw Heights, there was nothing beyond Sheridan, so there's been a lot of development. Along the Front Range and the metro area, people are, residents are railing against unmitigated development. People in various communities around us, Arvada, Lakewood, Waitridge, are all raging against this kind of a development. But progress is progress, I guess. What I'm asking is that you oppose the amendments. I agree with the previous speaker about separating this into the three parcels from the main jewel, as he called it, because I think it gives a sort of an approval that they will use to go ahead and then apply those same things to the larger issue. These parcels have significance of their own, particularly the viewpoints. The comment that they are within five minutes of a transit station, that's only if you get in your car and hopefully the traffic isn't that bad, or if you're calling the bus stop at 84th and Federal a transit center, or the one, the bus stop at 36th and 80th Avenue a transit center, then this is not within walking distance or five minutes of a transit center. I'm asking you not to approve the proposal for D and B because you have so many projects underway right now, big development projects. You just approved a study of the federal corridor. That will impact what happens with all of this area too. There's no haste necessary. They've already admitted that if it's not approved, they'll go back and think of something else. Let's look at the something else. Looking at a 100-year-old plot and deciding that that's the governing idea and ignoring the fact that the comprehensive plan, excepted this zoning as it is now, don't change the character of our neighborhoods. I know that I'm supposed to make a real rational appeal. I'm making appeal for the character of the neighborhood that I live in, the neighborhood where we send our children to school, where we're afraid because of the traffic, where we worry. It was once a lake, there are times when it's become a lake again with the drainage issues. Both of these plots of lands are on deep slopes and drainage is an issue. I think there's more information and it needs to be garnered. There's no rush necessarily to approve this. Give time for your review of the comprehensive plan. When you say it's in general compliance, if you tell me I can have a pet animal in my backyard.
Ms. Bryant, I'm sorry, that's your time.
Okay. Could be a hamster or an alligator. Thank you.
Ms. Bird. Larry Prado, Joshua Katz, Linda Crump.
My name is Larry Prado, 9925 King Court. As an active voter and taxpayer, I strongly urge you to oppose the resoning and development of all the parcels of the land as the Upland development. This amendment does not serve Westminster public or community interest. It serves a completely private purpose. Consider the following. Adding 2,350 units will have between 2,350 and 4,700 more cars to already congested city streets, including Federal and Sheridan and all the east-west streets. The plans for traffic and water are too vague, especially with water. We don't want to end up like Thornton that has mandatory water restrictions. We kind of forget about Westminster's on the hill, kind of far from the riverbanks. The plan mentions substantially changed conditions. There really aren't any substantially changed conditions that I can tell, and if so, what are they, besides congested roads and bad air? The plan says there will be minimal environmental impacts if you develop any or all of these parts, these parcels. What will happen to the native birds, including robins, sparrows, owls? We have hawks here too, and they're food sources. What will happen to the black foxes? The plan does not address our increasingly poor air quality or open space and ignores the fact that open fields need plants, crops, forests reduce greenhouse gases. During the developer's presentation at the planning commissioner meeting, the developer presented air stuff of the impact on the traffic would be minimal. I hope that you saw the tape, or maybe you were present during that meeting, but there was a lot of laughter and gas during that meeting that we had to have been careful of. The audience quiet, people don't believe it. Several developers talking about missing middle. This is a PR-based existential threat, literally a threat to our existence. It's supposed to make us feel like something is missing, or when there's nothing missing, or there's something, we don't know what, will go wrong if not addressed. This is fear-based log. Developer claim unnamed employers told them they wanted a larger pool of more educated, younger and more educated people for their workforce. 7-Eleven, fun microsystems. You really can go to any company in any city in any state and their employer would tell you exactly the same thing. The developer promised unspecified bike trails and public transportation access, but seriously, who's going to ride their bike or take the bus to the store to go get diapers or to go do some weeks worth of grocery shopping? People have, people drive. The developer also mentioned Washington Park, and I used to live there. Washington Park is not identity development with their plans of rows and rows of townhouses, including the walkability hyperfold. This is literally a completely bogus comparison. So the question is for you, ladies and gentlemen, is how will you be remembered in history with your vote? When you look in the eyes of your children, your voters, your grandchildren, will you tell them that you paved it or that you saved it? Vote no on this. Don't pave it. See you. Thank you.
Ms. Stewart, council.
I'm from Europe, I'm from there. Hello. My name is Joshua Katz, and I'm here to speak in support of the comprehensive plan amendment of parcel D specifically. I'm the owner of the Summit Square Shopping Center, which is a 12-acre retail center across the street from parcel D on 84th and Federal. In general, I think that this will fit the surrounding area, and it will create a nice transition between the apartments and our center and the new Uplands development. I think it helps to create a diverse housing mix within the project, and it helps the missing middle. You know, I wrote in a letter in support of the amendment also, and I was ranting, kind of. It was very long, so I'll keep these comments short. Just in summary, I think that the planning staff recommendation is appropriate, in particular for parcel D, and I support the amendment of the comprehensive plan for all the parcels. Thank you.
Linda Crump, I've lived off of 77th and Osceola for 23 years. I listened to the city council study session from November 18, 2019, in which Max Kirshbaum stated that we have enough water for today's needs, that we have a water supply gap at future build-out within 2,000 acre-feet shortfall, which is 652 million gallons of water. It seems future build-out is coming quickly. There are probably many development projects happening that I'm unaware of, but the recent ones I found out about are all just below 92nd. You have Elto with 70 units, Eaton Street with 118 units, Assent has 255 units and 700 more are on the way, Terrace Gardens, 70 units, and now considering Uplands with the planned, but possibly more than 2,350 units. Uplands alone has a projected need of 778 acre-feet of water. Number eight on your city land use changes states that proposed amendments will not negatively impact other things like water supply, among other things, like water supply. It seems our city planners and city councils should not risk the sustainability of our water supply for existing businesses and current residents by overbuilding. In that same study session, some remedies were mentioned to improve our water supply. One was those, one of those was purchasing more water rights, which was followed by a discussion that pointed out there are basically no water rights to be had. There were reservoirs and fixing infrastructure to make the water use go further, but the major agreement was simply conservation. No one wants to waste water. The citizens here have already cut back on water usage. And now that we've had a big rate hike, many people are gravelling over their lawns or just letting them burn out. Not all of us can afford to go out and redo everything with nice new ziras. I feel that our established communities should be able to continue to have homes with a garden or a flower bed or a little bit of lawn. As your constituents, we suggest you protect our water supply by not overbuilding. Not everyone that moves to Colorado needs to be housed in Westminster. Please leave us some sorely needed space and some resources.
You have Dean Carter, Eric Wyckoff, Day Lou.
Number six proposed amendment says not including the need for affordable houses. These houses are going to need at least starting 300. Now, the people that make that, and the need for sidewalks around here. Our sidewalks are fine. They're smaller because when the houses were built in the 60s, people weren't as fat. Now, you guys want a little sidewalk around here, and they'll be wider because people don't go outside. Millennials, they don't even want to make a bowl of cereal in the morning because it's full of milk and cereal. They're very greedy to cereal. And number eight of the proposed amendment said it will not negatively affect the transportation system. If you go over on Bowl, 5:30 in the evening, 84th and Bowl, you can see headlights, nothing but headlights coming over there. And if you put more houses, it's only going to get worse. And, you know, if you can't see that, you're blind. And this end, if, I'm on a limited income in a disabled veteran, like many other people on limited incomes, I can't afford an annex to us. I'm sure we have. Someone's already addressed the bus stops. No one's going to walk two, it's 2.2 miles from 88th and Hunter to Sheridan and 36th. Nobody's going to walk 2.2 miles. And I just want to say, opposed to this, and I think we can find something better to put besides these points, besides this long straws.
Excuse me, Mr. Lou.
Do you have the mail? The map?
Yeah, there is a package in front of me.
Mr. Mayor.
Sorry.
Do you have to open? It's the mayor.
No, I'm waiting to listen to you.
Right, but I was about to present that, but you guys don't allow people to present the slides.
Oh, yeah, we're sorry.
Thank you. Good evening, again, councilor, mayor. Confucius once said, "First time strangers, second time buddies." Now, as an old friend of yours, I ask you to deny this atrocious amendment application right here, right tonight. One of my many reasons is that the developer is incompetent for the project. They are so incompetent that they have to pull out a college town plan from 100 years ago to justify the Uplands' pathetic future existence and high-density design. And to pile on, from last night, they started to call it a historical fact. What a joke! Back of what? That college town plan was such a failure that it's never come to fruition in the past 100 years. If the developer can call a pipe dream from 100 years ago a fact, no wonder they can call the homes they are going to build attainable. No wonder they can, they think there'll be no impact on traffic, water, and water. Ladies and gentlemen, it's all in their head. They are so out of touch and incompetent and eating corn chips in cornfields, I don't think this developer is even able to dig up a hole for their, for itself to hide its head. The Uplands project is going to destroy Westminster's past, future, history, and identity. To provide some historical context, it is going to destroy 20% of the original 1911 incorporated Westminster. This actually is a historical fact. Another historical fact, the land has been a farm for the past 100 years. This farm land and the council have made Westminster Westminster. Let me repeat, the Uplands project is going to mess up Westminster's history and identity. Have you heard the viral sound of bonded residents? Uplands, up your lands, up my lands, no Uplands. Yeah, mayor gets it. On slide three of my handout, you can see there are 12 words in Westminster's 83-word vision statement that are actually against the development, and only one phrase for it, which is the phrase "tax base." Mr. Mayor, as an old friend of yours now, I know very well that you are a sales tax guy. In July 2017, when you kicked off your reelection campaign at the city park, only 1 million to your speech, you already mentioned that you are dependent on sales tax. Yes, stay thirsty, my friend. However, destroying a 100-year-old farm in order to expand the tax base is just like giving up your family name, Ajison, and changing it to Ajisan and trying very hard to fit into the Japanese community. It's not that Westminster's Japanese community doesn't want you to be their child, but it's because they don't want you to give up your own heritage that easily. Okay, let me read out loud the city's vision statement and allow me to knock on the podium to highlight every word that is against Uplands, since you don't allow the people to show their slides in a sense projected. I will show you that Uplands violates the very first
Mr. Lou, that is in your time, sir.
Thank you.
Donna Workheiser, Jim Travis, and Deb Rickenberger. Donna here.
I'm here, but I didn't sign up.
I forgot your name, somebody filled out. Have you ever talked? You still like to talk or you want to pass?
Yeah, I can say what to say. It's meant to be.
I think it's two lanes.
It's okay.
No, it's one way.
Yeah. Well, I sent you all a letter today about my experiences with having something go behind my house. I don't really know who wrote it, read it, of all the different things that I've gone through trying to get answers, things that I've seen that have gone wrong. And this is a small project. This is on the corner, you're talking. I mean, who's not being responsible for watching? I mean, if, like I said, if you go by Rockdown Federal, number four on the plans list that it's supposed to be, Ray is federal. Tell me, anybody, if it doesn't look or go up into that parking lot. How did that happen? I have a list of questions there, and I'm hoping somebody gets back to me on this. Because I've watched this, I've said, you know, I've been threatened by three different people on this project because I spoke up, and I just don't understand how this all happened. I've lived there 25 years, and this is disgraceful. So I'm hoping that this does not go through, and yeah, I'm hoping somebody looks at this project and can answer the questions I ask.
Mr. Travis.
Good evening, mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Deb Rickenberger, and I have lived in the city of Westminster for over 30 years. I live across the street, directly across the street from Parcel A, and for the record, I have never seen a rat. I am here to say, and why I believe the city council should vote against the proposed comprehensive plan amendments. First, I like to find, I find that the public is at a disadvantage when speaking to the city council about the proposed comprehensive amendments. The applicant was allowed to present a full overview of the Upland development. Their presentation even showed many images of places that are not even within the city. It's very, very misleading. It almost feels very propaganda-ish. The public has been instructed many times to keep their comments, their public comments to the proposed comprehensive plan amendments, for only the three parcels. Kinda seems like it's a form of censorship of ours. I'm a firm believer in progress. I consider myself forward-thinking. I believe that the city should focus on completing the new downtown Westminster and the Westminster train station. Completing these projects would be a true measure of the city's economic and housing business vision. Westminster Forward boasts "one community, one vision, one future." How does Upland fit into the "one community"? When many of the nearby residents are opposed and extremely concerned about all the potential negative impacts of this development. The increased traffic, pollution, noise, crime, new water, lack of water, sewer infrastructure, it goes on and on. What about the traffic? I live on Lowell 24/7, 365 days a year. The city staff and the applicant might think that they know what traffic will become, but I beg to differ. The current traffic is absolutely crazy most evenings. The potential of adding more people to such a small area would make traffic intolerable. I ask you, why does the applicant want to change the comprehensive plan? All I hear is that it's the city's vision. Is there an underlying issue with profitability of the existing comprehensive plan? Why office to high-density housing? Is there a surplus of office space in the city, or is it, and it's not profitable to Baltimore? Is it take the good with the bad? Is it all or nothing for this plan? Will the applicant wait, do the bait and switch, bail out, and leave the city to clean up a mess if there's an economic downturn? I strongly urge the city council to listen to the people who already live here and vote against the proposed comprehensive plan amendments. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Rover Sardaro, Earl Meridia, and Bruce Baker. Rover here. Earl.
Thank you. I appreciate your patience. So, good evening. I appreciate the fact that you gave me the time to in front of you. I'm gonna have three comments against the amendments, and I'm gonna focus on water, traffic, and humans. Be careful of a lot of unqualified statements. Oh, it's gonna make that traffic. I believe this. I believe that. Really, these are gonna be facts that I'm gonna lay out before you that are qualified statements. Okay, and that pertains to the amendments. I put the pertains to right there. I won't go over it because I'm tired. So, I looked on the Westminster website, this is on the Westminster site. So there's a lot of trouble with water litigation over the last 50, 60 years, including protests, building moratoriums because of the water problems. So in '63, we had to buy 12,000 acre feet, so on and so forth. So I'll let you read through those. But we've had to partner with Thornton, other area cities to solve these problems. So we have an already precarious water situation in a climate change environment. So how, where's the water gonna come from? How many acre feet? Are we working with these other partners? So if you look at the pictures, the developments on three and four, that's what we're proposing to go to. And so I did some quick comparables, like real estate comparables. So in the area, lot sizes range from 700 square feet on up to 100, I'm sorry, 1,100 to 1,200. Price ranges in the comparables are 365 to 530K right now. Not talking about in that beautiful area or other areas of Westminster, so keep that in mind. What's the drainage plan? Keep in mind, on the pages, you see the different houses. Now, if you look, you see green space around them. That's not gonna be the case. If you approve this amendment, there is no minimum lot size. They are gonna pack these. So this water's gonna run off. So also thinking about sewage, have to think about the infrastructure. Traffic, so 2,300s on the full build-out, if you were to do this, is equal to like a first base center every day, every night, leaving that area. So we're gonna add a first base center. That's what we're looking at. So to say that, oh, that's not gonna impact traffic, actually, traffic will go down. That's not the case. It's an unqualified statement. So what are the plans to improve the infrastructure? I know that's PUD and down the road, but we need to think about that right now before the amendment comes up. Impact on Westminster schools. This is important to me. I have children in the district. 9,000 students, they don't rank very high. So this is a student, this is a district that's under stress. So we're gonna, I heard the developer saying, we're gonna help them by giving them more students. If you look at the last page of the exhibits, we have students right FM Day, right by the development that I showed you, that are in huts. So we're gonna add more students to this, but as long as they get money, right?
That's the end of your time.
You gotta think, everybody that wants this, have customers or have financial interest with this.
Mr. Murray, that is the end of your time, sir.
Thank you, sir. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Baker.
Hi there. My name is Bruce Baker. I've come to talk about the changes to the comprehensive plan. We have a comprehensive plan. To change it, there must be a profound benefit to the public. Not some whimsy of the owner, but a profound benefit to the public. There is none here. Let me use a metaphor. The comprehensive plan is like a human being. It was designed, every part was thought about. And now you wanna say, on Parcel A, left hand, we're gonna add two fingers. Gonna make more density, because fingers are good. It's just gonna crowd it out. It's gonna make it unusable. When you add more density to that awkward piece of land, how is the traffic going to get onto Lowell? It's gonna have to swing around. Lowell is one of the three major north-south through. That's just gonna crowd it up. You don't need to add a lot of density to get congested. The 3.5 is a good plan for them. Now let's go to Parcel D, like my left foot. You're gonna cut off my big toe. Big toes are really important for people. Right now, that's an office building. That's the way the comprehensive plan works. Each part of the plan helps the other parts. When the designers of this plan made those designations, they said, "We need office buildings there." And it's a great sign for office building. It fronts on 84th. Now you wanna put apartments there? So they're gonna hear the road noise all day long? That's stupid. Plus also, look to the benefit of the school district. If there's office buildings there, the school district gets lots of property tax money. They have to educate, whoopsie, zero students. Now you're gonna take that money away from them and make them educate a few students. That hurts them. Changes to the comprehensive plan is a promise to the people who live in this city about how the land's gonna be used. People make decisions based on those. They invest their dreams and they invest their money. Now you wanna change that and betray it. It should only be done if there's a valid public benefit, which I say there is not, to B and D. And it shouldn't hurt, and I think this is going to hurt. Let's go back to B, you know, the hand with seven fingers. Okay, when we add more houses and hardscape to that, what's it gonna do when it rains? It'll be far more raining. 3.5 is a good number. Office buildings on D is a good number. Please stay with that. Thank you.
Stephen Flint, Chris Mahoney, Willow Papa George.
I don't care to speak.
Much more are you, sir?
I live at 7461 Elliott, behind the Come and Go, that Building Department cannot seem to manage the construction. Who knows what they'll do with this big Upland? But I bought my first house in Westminster in 1974. I've owned it ever since. I don't live there. I live up the street. And my big concern is traffic and water. And I have a question. When the city of Westminster enlarged Stanley Reservoir by increasing the capacity by the dam, did the dam ever, the water in the dam ever reach to the level of the existing dam? Nobody seems to be able to answer that one. I've asked a couple times, and nobody knows. Traffic, federal is two lanes each way. You can't enlarge it unless you're gonna get rid of, let's see, what did the gentleman say? Pod shops, liquor stores, the, I don't remember, all the little businesses that are there. Lowell is two, one direction each way. You're gonna get rid of the houses? You can't enlarge the infrastructure to supply or get the cars in and out of that development. I am against it. Thank you.
First of all. Willow Papa George.
Hi, my name's Willow Papa George, and I am homeowner on Lowell, directly across from Parcel A. I'm also a voter here in Westminster. I cherish my home and I love my neighborhood. I'm truly blessed to live where I do, so I'm here tonight to do my best to protect our lovely community. Most of us who live in the area work full-time jobs. We don't have expertise in city code or land use laws, but we do understand how these proposed changes will impact us and our surroundings. We are the ones whose lives will be most affected by this development, and we are your constituents. And I thank you for everything. I understand we're only supposed to consider the zone changes to Parcells B, D, and E tonight, but it's impossible to remove these parcels from the whole development application. These changes might seem insignificant when looked at in a vacuum, but they are substantial zoning changes that should not be made easily. I know you have guidelines to follow when making your decision, but you're also human and have consents, so I'm sure you see how enormous the impact of these changes would be in reality. In real life, these changes would make Lowell a major thoroughfare that will forever destroy the calm and quiet neighborhood that we now enjoy. The pillar fire farmland is special, and it should be considered the crown jewel of Westminster. Instead, it's being discussed as an unimportant commodity. But come on, you could be spending your time thinking about how to capitalize on this rare land. There are endless better uses for this pristine and picturesque land than this development. Think about how exciting it would be to consider other uses. An educational farm to expand on the historic use of the land while teaching a few more generations about the importance of rural production? Isn't an agri-community or agri-hood so much more exciting than another high or medium dense mixed-use development that is too expensive for any of us to afford? Wouldn't you rather be debating the possibilities of a truly new and original neighborhood that would get international recognition while leading the way of the future? You have the makings of a truly amazing and trailblazing kind of development available to you today. What other cities have that possibility? Not many. With some guts and some forward-thinking, this part of Westminster could become the envy of the nation. We all want Westminster to be a beautiful, desirable, safe, and environmentally responsible city. With some forward-thinking, this land could become an innovative prototype. These zoning changes for this development are not right for this part of Westminster. It's much too dense and not creative enough for this iconic land. I beg you all to represent our needs by protecting our neighborhood and Westminster's history by denying these changes. Thank you.
Art Jacobson, Mike Jorgensen, Lauren Lein. Art Jacobson here. Mike Jorgensen.
Hi. I'm Mike Jorgensen. I live across Parcel A and 84th and Lowell. My neighbors and I all love living in this neighborhood. And we agree that it is critical that we keep it intact. This development is incongruous to the neighborhood, and it is not what we residents signed up for when moving here. Now naturally, the owners of the farm are within their rights by wishing to sell the farm, but the results must be within reason, and this council should recognize the negative impact of this proposal. Our infrastructure is not meant to withstand such an overwhelming burden. And finally, I just wanted to mention that everyone who I've heard speak in favor of this development consistently did so out of a financial interest in the project, but not with respect to the existing residents who are invested in this neighborhood every day.
Lein. Next up will be Elena Dare, Dawn Palmer. Lyrical empty.
Just to set the record straight, my last name is Noakes Lein. The words know how they always seem to be used.
Okay, sorry.
And, excuse me, did the city clerk deliver to you three photographs and sign them? They'll probably get sick of looking at the back of the ball. But anyway, Mr. Mayor, I'm here on the floor. My name is Lauren Noakes Lein. I have lived at 8150 La Place Court for 52 years. The focus of my presentation is part of Parcel B, south of Redburn Drive. The city clerk has distributed those maps briefly. David Kosky was the amateur photographer who took the pictures. The property is only 12.582 acres, or approximately 5% of the overall proposed Upland development. This iconic and irreplaceable land must be preserved for posterity as open space. Looking at a flat map does not show the incredible elevations of the property. I understand that the top of the hill is the highest point in Adams County. Because I live on top of the hill, I am exquisitely aware of the destruction of panoramic views when development takes place. Even low buildings block views from pedestrians and cars. Over time, additions to buildings are added, landscaping and trees matured, and in less than 40 years, you still have a nice property, but the views are gone. A large part of the property is designated as 15% grade and really unsuitable for development. The top part of Parcel B offers magnificent views to the northwest, west, and southeast to Denver. Once houses are built there, the views will be blocked from the public forever. During the water tank construction, I understood the top of the hill would be graded, so if there were a failure of tanks or pumps, all water would flow to the north, where there were no houses. This was to reassure the homeowners on the This was to reassure the homeowners on the south side of the hill who experienced pump failures several years ago. Millions of gallons of water rushed through their yards and into their basements. Now we are told there is a retention pond on the north side of the tanks to handle the water from any failures. I don't know why, but I like confidence that the little tiny retention pond will be adequate. Any homes built in Parcel B would be at risk. What would be the liability of the city in a worst-case scenario? Will the developer be required to disclose his information to homebuyers in Parcel B? There are apartment buildings at 84th and Lowell Boulevard. This is a nice, there is a nice playground centrally located for the children. I have observed that the playground is used by young children. The older kids head straight through the cornfield next door to play hard, use their imaginations and inventiveness, and have some totally free and disorganized fun. I believe kids need open spaces, preferably close to home. The Uplands Development Plan will be required to dedicate 70 to 80 acres of land to public land use. Why not let the south part of Parcel B be part of that dedication for open space? It wouldn't cost the city anything to buy. Westminster Comprehensive Plan 2013 states scenic, quote, "Scenic vistas are a key element to Westminster's identity, whether to expansive open space areas within the city or to the mountains beyond. The city's varied topography provides breathtaking panoramic views to the Rocky Mountain French Range and downtown Denver," end quote. This site provides both.
Ma'am, I'm sorry for your time.
That's okay, just.
Mr. Dare.
Hello, my name is Elena Dare, and I live near 88th and Federal, and I am opposed to the proposed amendment to changing the land use designations for Parcels B and D. I will be focusing on Standard 6 of the 10 criteria the council considers reviewing an amendment to the land use plan. To summarize this particular criteria, the proposed amendment furthers an important public policy, such as the need for affordable housing, protection of historic resources, preservation of open space, or reduction in water demand. Regarding affordable housing, within the agenda presented by Westminster staff, it is stated that change in density does not specifically require that these units be designated as affordable or require any specific unit type. It is my opinion that approving the increase in higher-density housing for Parcels B and D with the assumption that they will provide affordable housing without requiring this to be the case creates a moot point and is therefore irrelevant. This is particularly the case since the Uplands proposal does not mention the intention of offering affordable housing within any of these new units. Regarding protection of historic resources and preservation of open space, while these particular parcels do not specifically carry either of those designations, they surround the nearby historical landmark of the Westminster Castle and a working farm that has just celebrated its 100-year anniversary. It is clear that the focus of this criteria is to protect and preserve untouched land, the opposite of what would be accomplished if these changes are approved. And third, regarding the reduction of water demand, although there seems to be debate about the effect of these proposed changes on the water usage, we can all agree that they certainly would not result in a reduction of water demand. Finally, I would like to make the point that although the requested increase in housing density for Parcel B from 3.5 to 5, and Parcel D from Office to 8 may somehow appear to not be significant on paper, the literal, physical reality is that currently these parcels are undeveloped. Uplands developers themselves have discussed how the current designations of these parcels are not ideal for people such as themselves looking to build. So if these changes are approved tonight, you are effectively making the change from zero units per acre to five, and zero units per acre to eight. Please consider the impact associated with these changes on the current residents of the community. Uplands developers have pointed to the Westminster Reform Summary as reason to believe their proposal is desired. However, that summary consisted of less than 3,500 responses, while a current petition on change.org against the proposal has over 6,000 online and in-person signatures. Please hear our community and hear us when we say that these are changes we do not want. Thank you.
Palmer.
Good evening. I also have. Crossing Parcel A, I'd also like to state, just as point of fact, a couple things I'd like to point out or discuss. B and D is number eight. Traffic, there is gonna be a traffic impact. If not, why did the city just approve $600,000 last night to do a traffic impact study on Federal? The numbers are skewed that we're working with because they're reflective from the 2013 comp camp numbers, which are not reflective of the influx of people, of traffic, that we've had that had been accounted for. Same goes for the water. The numbers that we're working with are the 2013 numbers in the comp camp. They don't reflect what's happening now. In the council meeting, excuse me, the study session you folks had back in November, this was fully discussed about lack of water, of build-out, I think that's already accounted for. The drainage and sewer, those issues, there's a clause or some wording in the ORE package where they will assist the city. I'd like to know what assists the city means. Are they paying for it? Or are the tax payers left to pick up the tab? Let's move on to item 10, or section 10, the ecosystem, the wildlife in the area. We do have eagles. They have been photographed. Granted, it might not be a nest on the farm, but it is a hunting ground. Same with the coyotes, the foxes, the geese. It's all part of the ecosystem, which is very fragile and we need to help protect. Even your first, excuse me, even the governor's first husband recently came out and spoke about animal rights. Most importantly, the carbon footprint impact that this will leave on the city, the county, the state, and the world if any of this is allowed to go forward. Lastly, your legacy and our legacy to our kids and our grandkids, all are right on your shoulders.
Mr. Valenti.
Good evening, I too must correct the record. I stand up as Larry Dean Valenti. That is my name. Members of council, Mr. Mayor. The plan derives the resources. In this case, we do not have a plan. One has been filed, but for reasons unbeknownst to the citizenry, we're not considering a plan. If we were, maybe the angst over some of the zoning issues would be gone, and our conversations would be more constructive. Why? Zoning is a resource. Changing the zoning to R5 on Parcel B is a mistake. The surrounding zoning is all R3.5, and this higher-level density is not a transition, but a lowering of standards of the existing community and a strain on resources. On any given night, cars can be seen parked atop Lowell Hill watching the sunset. The entirety of the southern part of Parcel B should be preserved as open space by the city. Pillar fire should be compensated by the city for the purchase of this open space. Contrary to your comment to a councilor's question last night, Mr. Tripp, that is how open space is acquired, the city purchases private property. The spectacularness of this mist, coupled with the last remaining portion of the city's original orchard, adds historic value and should be preserved as there is little open space preservation in this part of Westminster. Less than a year ago, Mayor Herb Atchison participated in the presentation of the business now future of the Northwest Corridor, along with Oriad Principal Jeff Hanlon. Purpose: Housing for the middle population in the area. Oriad had filed a preliminary development plan with the city prior to that. Mr. Mayor, I question whether or not you violated quasi-judicial. Last night, approximately 70 people signed up to provide testimony. Clearly, someone has shuffled the deck of speakers to achieve a desired order of speaking, as some of the earliest arrivals, who happen also to be speaking opposition, were placed at the end of the process, and many are unable to speak as a result. If the city clerk is responsible, she should be replaced. If the mayor is responsible, he should be held accountable by his counsel or his actions. Like others, I came hoping to persuade this council that there are problems that will arise with traffic, water, pollution, congestion with increasing the zoning. I knew the battle was uphill. I left last night not upset at the outcome, but at the bastardization of the public hearing process that seems quite clearly contrived to achieve a desired outcome. Thank you.
Melanie Noakes, Anna Bergola. Mr. Rickenberg, I got another sheet for you. So evidently I have a duty.
Yes.
She gets to speak twice. It's her twin sister.
Oh, great, not. Mr. Noakes.
Hello, my name is Melanie Noakes. I reside in Bradford Village. And the village of Bradford Village is often referred to as a comparison to what's going to be done for the Uplands' development. I grew up in Westminster, born and raised just around the corner. You just heard from my mom, Laura Noakes Lein. So I have a good understanding of what the hill is that they're talking about, Westminster. I grew up playing on that hill, driving by it, I still do, when I go to visit my mom. I'm opposed to the change to high density. I'm not opposed to developing the land. My mom couldn't attest to the fact that when they first talked about the fact that they were going to develop the land, she heard about it pretty early on. I said, "Mom, it was going to happen." What I am opposed to is the density of the land. I've lived other places. I moved back to Colorado. I chose Westminster and looked all over the city. It's not because of my family being here. I looked around Denver, I looked south and west, because west's better, of course. And what I learned is Westminster is distinct. It is distinct because we preserve things like open space, rail systems. We have an incredible recreational community. It's a good place to live. I love it. I'm here for that reason. Why I'm opposed to Parcel B, let's talk about that a little bit. The increased density, 40%. 40%. It was originally 100 houses. They told us this in the planning committee. Now it's 140. Pretty easy math, 40%. For context, Bradford Village, it did some math, it was a little rough. It used the tools available to me, which are the comprehensive planning map, some zoning maps, counted, did some math. I got some information from H2A, 125 acres, so many units. I was able to calculate that that is a dwelling unit density of 5.5 roughly. I don't have exact numbers. Per acre. You can easily calculate what the ORE plan is. It is 10 dwelling units per acre. Another 40% increase. Bradford Village is already considered to be a dense population. I love it. It's great. There's a lot of reasons it works. It has a beautiful gem of an open space next to it. It's gorgeous walking, has another beautiful park that is actually maintained by the city. People in the community use that park all the time, and we use that open space as well. That dense of housing in the suburbs works because we have a way to get with it. People move to the suburbs, so they're not talking to each other. But just consider this, ORE said it would still move forward even without this agreement.
Bergola.
Yeah, I just, and city council members. Thank you for listening to all of us. I'm not gonna repeat what's already been repeated. At one of the last meetings, you asked if we were wanting to, if we did agree with somebody, that we should just make that known. So at the risk of missing some of the people that I do agree with, I also want it to be noted that I totally agree with Mrs. Rickenberg, Mr. Baker, Ms. Papa George, Laura Noakes Lein, Ms. Dare, Mr. Palmer, Mr. Valenti, Melanie Noakes. I agree with everything that they have said. That being, I'm not gonna waste your time repeating the things about water, traffic, density, schools, et cetera. What I am here about is the view that will be taken away from everyone. "Oh, beautiful for spacious skies, for mountain waves of grain, for purple mountain majesties above thy fruited plains." And I think I've forgotten the words now because I'm nervous here. "God shed His grace on thee." And this Parcel B is a very, very small part of the entire city of Westminster, and yet it is there to be enjoyed by every person in the city that chooses to. I forgot to say that I live at 3720 West 81st Place. That is in Observatory Heights, which some people call Snob Hill. I would also like it to be noted that we are not snobs. We are everyday people. Most of us started with nothing. We worked hard. We earned our money the hard way. And over a period of years, we've been there for 35 years, we have made ourselves a life and a home in the small area of Observatory Heights. We also have friends and families throughout the entire city of Westminster. We care about all of them, not just ourselves. And so when you hear us complain about what's going to happen to Parcel B, it is not just woe is me. We live in our big fancy houses, and we don't want anybody disrupting what we already have. That is truly not the case. I also understand that the people that own the properties have a right to sell them. I just believe that there is extremely, it's gone to the nth degree on crowding in and packing in as much as can be possible for the developers to make every dime that they can, and the city of Westminster cannot withstand it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Believe it or not, we're through the list. Sorry, ma'am, if you didn't sign up last night. What is your last name?
Uh, Toenberg, Mary Toenberg, and I have my phone number there.
There is no sheet for you. I have no sheets for you, ma'am.
Well, I'm sorry. I left, but early on, I signed up immediately.
And as you remember, Mayor, I had signed up, and it was only because I came up that you couldn't find my name.
They found your sheet, correct?
Oh, good.
That's why you got called. Mr. Toenberg, I have no sheets for you.
Somebody didn't do the right job because I was on the top line of a new page. Maybe they thought that there was nothing.
You signed up for the public comment period. You did not sign up for this. That was in the beginning, ma'am. You signed up for the public comment period, not for the public land.
And still hasn't been called. And I signed up, and I should speak.
I'll give you three minutes, ma'am, so get up there, let's go.
My name is Mary Toenberg, and I wanna remind everybody that you are very humbly a city council member to represent the people who live here. That for, since 1959, I've been in Westminster. Well, in unincorporated Adams County, which is right at 86th and Lowell, basically. And all the taxes, all the money that needs to be paid for the water that actually is way over what should be collected now. The effort that has taken place to keep a city organized and as prosperous and as quality of living, we've done our part. So now I really appeal to at least four of you to really consider what your vote will mean to us.
to really consider what your vote will mean to us. The amount of density housing just at eighty-fourth and Federal between eighty-fourth and eighty-eighth is approximately equivalent to the connections of property that is right around the corner of City Hall. If you don't think that changes the character of Westminster, I ask each one of you who plan to vote yes on this to say no, we've got other options. Because we certainly do. We certainly want Dr. Doll and back and his organization to be compensated for the fine land that he owns. But we don't need to turn it into stack and pack, basically slum housing. It may not be considered slum by some, but I don't think anybody, or the majority of people in the city, on the city council, live in those conditions. And I don't think we should be asking anybody else to live like that to change the whole nature, the whole quality of what we've established as a standard. The, the importance thing is for you really to know that it's not, you're here to, if you really want to know and represent the people without ask, well, I urge that we have a vote on this. If you want to, if you're going to do this kind of a drastic change to this dense population, and where are these people coming from anyway? The free market isn't demanding this kind of sale for properties. Where's it come, I mean, where are the people getting their jobs from? I mean, how much is HUD? How much are we having to pay for all this, this total destruction of our quality of life here? Why do I say that? Because it, it changes things. Maybe somebody who's got a business across the street from this whole project, you know, the whatever.
All right, Ms. Toenberg.
Anyway, I'm just saying, I ask each one of you to know that you've got a legacy to uphold. Thank you.
So going back to those who recall last night, these are the ones who did not show up. Aaron Keys. Looks like Keith Orwell. Heard it past us. All right, ladies and gentlemen, when we make a switch over here, back, all the papers out. Pause, it was quick, very.
Enjoy your time, too.
Thank you.
I'm hanging up. When, you really went thank your setup?
Yeah.
He's doing it. Oh, it's your livestream.
Right now?
Voice watch?
I heard the mayor in seventeen.
Don't want to hold you to that. I say I get a warm place here every time I see you.
Well, I have noticed that. There's been a lot of reason to. I'm on the other side.
Nobody had the qualifications to take over the farm.
I wish you had more time. You've got last minute.
And once, so that we're not really going to miss this.
You don't hear a tractor jack sheet. All right, so you don't. Because I hope you think all my dreams that I have inside of me are lost. It's not so.
I cleaned that road for two years.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. You're wrong. You're the love. You did good to. Thank you. I'm not.
Yeah, I might go really quick. You're like, you're. Yes, yes, that's, and I used to. Yes, yes.
Every time he sees me, he says, "But yours, oh, look at that." He said, "Every Sunday, before the meeting." Living sort of. More houses. And it ended there.
But you have water.
Hey, ladies and gentlemen, for a turn. By this point, we have taken all testimony from the public. I will declare the public hearing closed. This time, we will turn to the applicant. Your opportunity for rebuttal, for any comments you heard in the testimony tonight. Following that, there will be final comments from the city staff and staff representation. They close the public hearing. And at that point, counsel, if you have any other questions that you need answered, we'll, you will go to that time. All right, sir, sir.
Great. Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I would actually, I'd like to start by saying we'll have a few speakers to walk through the different issues that we heard. We'll be sure that we try to do that. We actually started with council questions and then listened to all the testimony, and we'll try to walk through them. I'm also going to walk through the three parcels because I actually think it's easier to address the issues by looking at the three parcels. But first of all, I'd like to start by thanking the neighbors, the stakeholders and city staff for their remarkable contributions and to shape the efforts of this vision and this plan for uplands. We believe this neighborhood must be attainable, providing a balanced housing mix for all residents of Westminster. Additionally, we must complement, connect, to, blend and transition to all of our neighbors. We want to provide amenities, parks, open space, protect views, provide connections and utilities. And when we are finished, we want to feel as authentic as shines. I also want to say we trust your planning process. It is a very complex planning process. And I want to start with something that is, unfortunately, I believe we've kind of skipped or we've missed in the last number of speakers. For the last twenty-two years, the comp plan has envisioned the five parcels that make up uplands for development. They have been in the comp plan for twenty-two years. It is not your legacy. It is no one in this room's legacy. They have been in the comp plan. They will be developed in accordance. They will be developed in accordance with those comp plans. Today, and I just want to be clear about that, today, if there are changes to that, they will be developed. I want to be clear, and in no way do I mean that as a threat. Those five parcels allow thirty-eight hundred units today. That's a maximum density. I just want to see any of your comp plans today, thirty-eight hundred plus units. We have already said that we believe this is probably a twenty-three hundred, twenty-three hundred and fifty units. We want to step substantially down from what is already in your comp plan. So I just want to be clear that what we're here tonight are about three amendments to the parcels, the edge parcels. We are not talking about whether or not development can occur and what happens on parcel A. We completely agree with all the comments that we have to work through the infrastructure changes, the traffic changes, all the things that happen. And that is why you have the PDP and ODP process. I also want to be sure and address, this is not a bait and switch. Parcel A, which is the crown jewel, the largest site, that is T-Mont. That is zone T-Mont. And I know you all understand T-Mont, traditional mixed use. That allows to a maximum of R-18. So I just want to be very clear, that's actually zoned for more density, more than we're asking for in any of these other amendments. So that's certainly not part of the process. We're not going to come back. We want to develop under that existing comp plan. So why are we doing this? Why are we here for three what we believe are very minor amendments? Because we want appropriate development to occur. We want to create a place that reflects the vision and goals and policies of Westminster. These amendments are integral to that vision. Further, staff and the planning commission believe that the three amendments are in compliance with your approval criteria, what you actually have to evaluate them against. Your process also ensures that we must continue to meet that approval criteria through each one of those steps. So again, I'll just briefly walk through the three parcels. First of all, parcel E, and I'm going to be very brief here because I haven't heard a lot of questions or comments about that. That is to change the land use designation from office to private park or private open space. Private open space or private park is a definition in your code. It's a category. In no ways does it mean private. It means maintain privately but open to others. We want this to be open space. We think this stands alone and is very beneficial to the project and very beneficial to the neighborhood and the connection to the Highland Hills amenities. We think this is very straightforward. Parcel D, as you all know, is a change from office to R-8. I believe there were two speakers that testified for more office or to keep office on this parcel. Staff, their first comment said, "This parcel is currently designated as office, but the site is not well positioned for office development." What changed? Why did this change from 2013? St. Anthony's North relocated most of their staff and operations. This is now identified, that area, St. Anthony's, is a redevelopment area. The change is because of that, because of that event, that has changed what this site should be. So I just want to walk through kind of what are the results, the benefits of changing this instead of office to R-8. The benefits are, there's only a hundred and fifty-six residential units maximum, rather than three hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of office. There is significant lessening of traffic, impact particularly the AM and PM traffic. And the panorama to the east and green right of the south, those are R-18, so we're actually transitioning to R-8, a lower density than the surrounding residential. And this is also very important. We're going to add open space. First of all, the comp plan protects that view, which we all agree is incredible. So how can I say we're going to add open space? Because your office designation does not require public land dedication. So we, we do not dedicate open space in the office category. But as soon as you go to residential, we will make PLD, we will augment, supplement and add parks, trails, et cetera. So the open space is actually a terrific benefit that comes from this R-8 designation. Lastly, I'm going to try to, and actually I'd like to say about the utilities. The analysis, again, the utilities, schools, traffic, infrastructure, all of those things, we have to continue to meet, whether it's office or the R-8 residential. But this impact from a hundred and fifty-six units rather than three hundred and twenty-five thousand is very minimal. That's why it meets your requirements of the comp plan amendments. Lastly, I want to transition to parcel B, and I really want to focus on parcel B for a moment. The staff report said the proposed amendment is compliant with the prime principle of the comp plan, relative to well-designed, attractive neighborhoods and balanced housing mix. Specifically, the proposed amendment to parcel B provides the opportunity to increase housing diversity, which is a guiding principle of the comp plan. I have been guilty of this. Many people have, have talking about numbers, talking about density. I have said this will add up to forty additional units on this site. I want to say something. This change has not one thing to do with density. Up here, or maybe on your screen, shows parcel B, and I want to focus first on the Observatory Park south of Bradmore. Actually, I thought that Bradmore, the Observatory Heights neighbors were incredibly eloquent about what they want to protect. Their character, their views, the view shed, the parks. You need to look at this to understand, R-5 actually allows us to protect those very characteristics. Why is that true? Because the flaw of R-3.5 is that it requires a minimum lot of seven thousand square feet. So to develop that area, you see the white triangle there, that's kind of the development envelope. Then on the right, you see what we had there. We had the view corridors that are protected. That's the purple. And then you see we add public land dedication to the two other triangles. So we're only left with that small area there in the middle. That's a clustered area that we can develop with smaller lots. If we have to develop under R-3.5, we actually have to push into that, to push into the hills, to actually obstruct that. So the R-5, the allowance of having smaller lots, actually allows us to protect the very values that Observatory Heights wants us to protect. We have the same interest. It is hard to see, but you see the end result of this. If we have larger lots, we have to actually build closure, we actually obstruct those views, we touch their properties. Here, we protect their views, we give them more passive open space, and it's actually incredibly beneficial. Transition across Bradmore. Mountain Terrace Apartments are a hundred and fifty-four units. They are R-18. They sent a letter into you all saying, "We don't want seven thousand square foot lots right against this." Why? Because there's no apartments against a large lot. That's not the right transition. Your code, your guiding documents say, "Transition." That's what R-5 does. So when a Shawheys person said, "There's a perfect transition." It's not the transition, it's the Mountain Terrace transition to these lots. All we're doing again is doing proper land use planning to really bring this forward. I'll just say, and then I will talk about the utilities from our engineer. Regardless of how parcel B develops, we have to build the infrastructure, whether it's R-3.5 or R-5. So the drainage, the traffic, all of those things have to be addressed. And we have a plan to address that, and your code requires all of that. But it's this increment, this increment of up to forty units that we're asking you to approve because it actually gives us more benefit for the existing neighbors, not for us. I want to lastly say on the south side of Bradmore, we cannot get anywhere close to five dwelling units per acre. We can't achieve it. It's too small of a cluster when we do that. So our density is going to be the same there as the existing neighborhood. But we need R-5 to allow those smaller lots. So I just want to make that clear, and I'm happy to go through that, but that's a very important thing. We agree with Observatory Parks, and the way we deliver it is actually with R-5. And then we're going to have, we're going to walk through the utility questions.
Good evening, Todd Johnson. I'm going to go through and give a little more depth to a couple of points that have been brought up tonight on environmental, the utilities and infrastructure that Phil mentioned, and also just touch on the traffic. What I'd like to read to you is, is our environmental study that was put together that identified wetlands, threatened endangered species, observation and cultural resources. And from the conclusions in this report, they did not observe the presence of waters of the US, wetlands, as designated by the Corps. And they also did not identify the presence of federally listed endangered species on the site as animals or plants. And they also did not observe critical habitat. So there's been some discussion on the environmental side. We have done an analysis, we have done an analysis, and we continue to do those analyses that we move forward in the project. But to this point in time, we have not identified anything that is on the federal register or actually wetlands on the project, which are also major elements that we always look for and try to preserve on projects. Let me touch on some of the infrastructure. I think the infrastructure and also the traffic. There are great benefits that this project brings to the city. If we go through and identify things from a couple of different categories here on the water side, when Phil was just talking about the difference that we make on this project, when you think about a seven thousand square foot lot, you have a lot of that as open space, and that's irrigated areas typically on residential lots. And what happens when we get into the R-5 areas, we also get into the R-8 areas, we actually reduce the area of irrigated or those, those areas that we have plant material outside, which are large consumers of water. And sometimes what those can turn out to be is two to three times savings from what you get from traditional larger lots. So this overall project actually helps with the sustainability from the city's perspective on the water side. From the larger perspective, we have actually gone above and beyond what we typically do on projects. We have analyzed not only our site, but we also analyzed the overall city infrastructure from a water perspective and a sewer perspective. And we've gone two or three miles off of this site to analyze deficiencies that are currently out there in the city systems. And this project has identified those improvement areas and has also talked about it for making those improvements for the city. So it's not just our impact that we're, we're solving for, we're also solving for the impacts that are currently out there in the system. From a transportation perspective, again, I would go back to what we currently have and what you have in front of you is the comp plan. When we look at the comp plan, and we look at the traffic generation that this project could have, we're talking over twenty-eight thousand, almost thirty thousand trips per day. This reduction in what we have on the overall project is actually pulling that number down to about eighteen thousand. So if we go back to the twenty-three fifty that's been referenced, we can actually only, or we would only generate about eighteen thousand trips. What we do on this specific, these three parcels that we're talking about tonight again, is E, of course, has a reduction in traffic, D also has a reduction in traffic, and B has a slight increase. When you look at those together, what we're getting is only thirty-six ADT in addition to what is there currently today. And again, the AM and PM has been mentioned, those numbers actually come down because of the difference that we have between the uses. So we're going from office use actually back down into a residential use, that those numbers actually turn out to be less. What I'll also talk about lastly is, as professional engineers, our number one job is public safety. And what you see out there today is you see a lot of missing links. And it's not just the traffic impacts that we have to worry about. But I think the more important element that we're looking at here on this project, when we actually do come through and do improvements, is we're increasing public safety. There are missing links today with the sidewalks that are out there. And this project will connect those sidewalks that you see on your screen and make those, those vital connections that we don't have people walking down the shoulder. We have safer intersections. We'll be doing improvements at the intersections that are out there today, improving the signals, widening the roads. We're not widening onto existing properties that are out there. So the example that may have been referenced tonight was Lowell. Those improvements are not happening on those residents' property. Those improvements are all being pushed on to the Uplands projects, and we are taking the burden of those additional improvements to help with the capacity deficiencies again that are out there today and also the additional traffic that we will have with the overall project. So again, I think, in summary, when you think about this project in an overall context, this project actually provides that safety and it provides a lot of those missing elements that are out there and elements that would really complete this area and provide a complete link to this. Thank you.
Good evening. Bonnie DeChambeau with Norris Design. Thank you again for your time this evening. I'm going to touch on two areas related to the comp plan. Thank you, Jacob. First, we heard a couple of comments on the focus areas and where development should occur, and then just wanted to talk briefly about the approval criteria again. So starting with the focus areas, a couple of people brought this up. And I'm sure you all know this, this is pulled directly from your code or from the comp plan. But the comp plan notes the Dr. Cog Metrovision 2035 plan as a planning influence. And it identifies this area as part of the urban growth boundary, and it identifies urban centers. Urban centers are areas that could be developed or intensified to meet the goals of the plan to locate fifty percent of all new housing units and seventy-five percent of all new jobs in urban centers between 2005 and 2035. These five urban areas are also your five focus areas. So again, fifty percent of the housing units, it does not say all the housing units should occur, and those urban centers are focus areas. Two of those focus areas are downtown Westminster and Westminster Station. Downtown Westminster has a minimum density of sixteen to use per acre. Westminster Station has densities of a minimum from twelve up to thirty-two to use per acre, depending on location. So those two focus areas are helping provide higher density housing. You already have a great existing stock of lower density housing. It's critical that in order to meet these diverse housing needs, that you find that missing piece as well. You need to balance the existing housing stock of single family. This great new housing stock of house, of higher density homes that you're adding to these focus areas with something in between, something like what we're talking about today. The comp plan also talks about development potential. It assumes that the majority of vacant lands in sites with development for redevelopment, infill or intensification, will occur by 2035. The plan is not intended to specify or anticipate when this development potential will actually be realized. Nor does the designation of a site for certain uses necessarily mean that the site will be built, redeveloped with that use in the next twenty-two years. It also states that the citywide development potential is not a fixed or final number. As time passes, new opportunities for redevelopment and infill will arise beyond the sites currently identified as focus areas. The plan clearly states that development is not specifically limited to only occur in focus areas or is limited by the plan's development potential. Second, just going back to the comp plan and the approval criteria. Last night, we had the opportunity to hear Ms. McConnell give a great presentation on the development review process and our collective roles in that process. Your code notes the comp plan serves as the official policy document of city council and planning commission to provide a consistent statement of the city's plans and policies for future development to bring about the city's vision for the future. It ensures that new development occurs in the desired areas and in concert with the city's vision and the infrastructure capacity. The 2019 strategic plan describes this vision. It includes distinct neighborhoods, quality educational opportunities and a resilient local economy that includes a spectrum of jobs and diverse integrated housing. There are ten specific approval criteria that you use to judge these land use amendments. Many of these focus on the consistency with the city's vision, with adopted plans, policies and guidelines, how it serves public purpose, orderly growth and what has changed. It also talks about impacts to referral agencies, adjacent properties and infrastructure. There's one critical change that has happened since the 2013 plan. This is the recommendations of the 2017 housing needs assessment. The study discusses demographics. It states that accommodating a variety of housing choices and price points will be important to attract new residential workers and employers. It looks at the city's housing profile and affordability and notes the ability for residents to become homeowners has dropped. The findings on development trends and housing stocks note that the residential unit distribution will need to slip, shift slightly toward higher density to accommodate the expected growth. And it recommends increasing the diversity of housing available for purchase for a two-pronged approach by adding residential housing products and build community in older neighborhoods through infill and enabling greater diversity by new construction. Today, twenty-six percent of the city is designated as R-3.5. All other residential designations from R-1 to R-36 and T-Mont only amount to eleven percent of the city. This existing mix of residential land use designations does not meet the recommendation to increase the diversity of housing available for purchase, and it does not enable greater diversity. There are few remaining sites in Westminster for large-scale neighborhood planning. Proposed Upland community represents an opportunity for all of us to help realize the housing and neighborhood principles of the comp plan on a significant scale. These amendments provide a key opportunity for all of us to work together to achieve this vision of resilient local economy that includes a spectrum of jobs and diverse integrated housing. that includes a spectrum of jobs and diverse integrated housing. We also heard last night about in the development review process summary, both the city's municipal code, guidelines, and standards. They're the regulatory codes that implement this vision. We know we have a lot to work to do. Our next step for the entire Uplands development is a rezoning. One of those criteria is to prove to all of you that there is existing capacity in a city's street drainage and utility systems to address the project or we provide that capacity in a timeframe acceptable to City Council. We need to work with staff. We need to work with all of you. We need to work with the neighbors. We need to work with the referral agencies to prove to all of you that this project can meet the infrastructure demands that are required for it. We're here to focus on this city's vision tonight so that we can move to that next step and prove to all of you how we can address those issues. We have one last speaker that wants to do a quick wrap-up. Of course, our whole team will be here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Bonnie. And I'll be very brief. I wanted to address a couple of things that I heard that are not before you, but that I wanted you to hear a response to. And some of those questions were from you, you councilors. One was about affordable housing. And I want to make sure I address that. There are very big differences between affordable subsidized housing and attainable housing, which is attainable in our project by design, by the type and size of project. A 950 square foot cottage is a great example. One of the things that Mr. Senke brought in this example. Last night, that's a product called We Cottage has something we plan to introduce in our project. That's not before you today. That is an attainable project that is not subsidized in any way. Affordable housing is something that is subsidized. It's always a typically is a rental unit and it requires a subsidy from the city, state, or federal level. I know because I used to work in this industry, in the Section 42 low-income housing tax credit industry. It's very important to us. We're a mission-driven organization. We will have both affordable and attainable housing in our project. It is critically important to us to provide a full spectrum of housing to the city. And that includes affordable, senior, and attainable housing. Not only what we've seen most so far in the last few decades, larger houses that are single-family and apartment buildings that are market rate. Of course, you'll see those things are a project, but a full spectrum of housing includes all of those things. Those details aren't before you today. But I promise you, we are working diligently every day behind scenes with folks that you know to provide affordable housing in this project. That's one thing I want to make sure I, and you'll see details from us soon. In the coming months, you'll see the PDP before us, knock on wood. And you'll be able to see those details. Secondly, parcel B views. I want you to hear from me. The bus stops here. Those views on top of that hill in parcel B are going nowhere, nowhere. The flat spot on top is public park, public forever. And the growth that you see out there is going to remain. So that's not something we're willing to compromise on. That's something that we compromised from an earlier view of our project. And I think you saw it when Marcus showed this slide. That is critically important to us. The other critically important area is the other mentioned by the email that I think Counselor Smith referenced, which was the hill at parcel D, the southeast corner of parcel D. That also, that view shed in downtown Denver will remain forever as a public park and view corridor. Just want to make sure everybody understands that. Lastly, I'd like to talk a little bit about if we're going to be serious about lessening vehicle dependency, that we've got to rely on the assets that we already have, including your commuter rail, which is a wonderful asset, and the existing bus stop at 86th and Federal. While there is no intersection or crossing at 86th and Federal amazingly today, we are going to get that crossing. That's the first thing that Crown Point asked us for, safety for the kids. Get those kids across that street safely. So in terms of children, school children, safety, I don't think you're going to find a developer more committed than we are. So we will build crossings and pedestrian sidewalks because I agree it is a very dangerous condition for those kids at Flynn Elementary, Shaw Heights, and Crown Point. Lastly, it's taken us two and a half years to get here. Trust me, we have lots of detail to show you. It's just not that point in the process yet. I can't wait to answer your questions if you had any more tonight. And I can't wait to provide more details about this project for you in the coming months. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Trump, staff have any items that they'd like to present?
I just want to make a couple of comments. And I'm turning to Rita Powell to address some of the questions we raised earlier this evening. And I'll be brief. The first thing I'd say is that we provided to you, I think, good background, staff information, and research. We're bound to address requests for approval of comprehensive land use and land amendments, or this document here that's been handed out this evening. And I think we've done a good job of that. I also want to share with you that we provided us an agenda memorandum that is much more detailed and more comprehensive about the full set of processes relating to the furtherance of this project. And I would invite you, if you haven't read that document, to take a look at. Each and every word in there was crafted specifically to address a long-term view of this project. The last thing I'd say is I just want to take a second and compliment our staff from the planning department that took us through, I think, a very comprehensive review of those guidelines and their assessment of that and a whole number of other city staff that over the course of the last couple of weeks have spent an awful lot of time here. I appreciate them and they're here available. Most of them probably won't be asked questions tonight, but they've taken time out tonight, last night, two weeks ago, in a 19-hour day and an 18-hour day, and I really, really appreciate it. With that, Rita, would you go ahead and address maybe some of the things we've heard in the question and answer?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilors, we've heard numerous times the past two nights about the need to keep focus on this and focuses related to the use and density of the result. You have very specific criteria, which we will now apply to all the public testimony from the past two nights. Staff will help assist you in keeping that focus by only really addressing comments and answering items pertaining to that. You will probably hear us deferring questions or comments to that PDP stage. And I think that will help in your deliberation. We did hear comments about water and traffic and staff did answer questions related to that last night. Tonight, we did hear more comments about view corridors and deseed and Jacob will answer or add comments to those comments that were made. He will also address the ADA housing that's not part of this criteria, though I think it's enough to make a statement about that at this time. And again, we have the whole team available to answer questions. Whatever you have. And this all turned over to Jacob at this point.
Good evening, councilors. First, I'd like to answer the question that Counselor Smith raised yesterday, or yes, last night, about Bradburn and the density of Bradburn. So Bradburn, as planned, was 113 acres with 805 dwelling units permitted in the original ODP. That would have resulted in a density of 7.12 dwelling units per acre gross. That's a T-Mund designated parcel, so doesn't particularly apply to parcels B, D, or E when we're thinking about those, but it is something to think about in consideration of the larger project. Another one that's a similar T-Mund project that you might be thinking up in your head is Highland Village. That's 71.53 acres and originally permitted for 426 dwelling units. That density is 5.95 dwelling units per acre gross. I'd also like to make just a slight correction to one of the answers I gave you last night about the PLD that this project could owe. I gave you a range of 80 to 85 acres. And the range would actually be 76 to 80 acres. I went back and checked my math this morning. Some of the questions, or the comments offered by the audience was on view corridors. And Rita and I would like to read specifically from the Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 6. And this is page 6-12, 6.4 Views. The Comprehensive Plan identifies view corridors along portions of the city's major street network and from key public spaces as shown in Figure 6-2. The designation of these view corridors preserves the most significant use from the public realm. Areas with a designated view corridor may be subject to additional setback requirements, high restrictions, and modified perimeter landscaping or site configurations to ensure that new development will not restrict use. Development proposed within these corridor areas will be evaluated to preserve use wherever possible. Further, and later in Chapter 6, under the policies, under CID-P-23, this is on page 6-27. Ensure that designated view corridors are integrated into planning for new development. Preservation of view corridors may require dedication of land, building or upper-story setbacks, and modified building orientation and placement. So that's more something that's to us says the Comprehensive Plan is indicating that we will protect those view corridors in a PDP either through some sort of land dedication, setback restrictions, high restrictions. That's something that we're still talking with the applicant through. They have submitted their PDP. We are talking about view corridors with them. There has not been an agreement or anything from staff on whether we would support those view corridors to be preserved as public land or private land and exactly how that would be. We're waiting on the applicant to resubmit their PDP. I believe that's when we would take another look as to whether staff would support that. As far as the density categories that were mentioned, a lot of the comments from the audience has been that this is high density. And I'd like to point you to the attachments in the agenda memo, specifically Attachment 3. At the title, at the top of Attachment 3, under R5 residential dwelling units. This is listed as a moderate density. And that's in the narrative in R5 residential. And then same for R8, that is also listed as a moderate density. City staff considers high density for the comp plan to be the R18 category and the R36 category. We consider R5 and R8 to be moderate. Lastly, on ADH housing. ADH housing is not a criteria for the Comprehensive Plan. It's also not a criteria for the preliminary development plan. It is something that the city does observe through the building permit process and it applies specifically to developments and unit counts. So it's not something that we would look at or consider at this stage. And if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I'll come back to you. Anything else, Mr. Trump? Just want to know a little bit about the council. Either the applicant or the city staff have some questions. Turn them on.
First question I actually have. Visual corridor. And so if, for example, you would like to do a 3.5, you would still evaluate the visual corridor.
Yes, Counselor. So regardless of the land use designation, beginning one out of there, the city staff would still ensure that the PDP had some protection for the view corridor. It could depend on what the designation is, whether we apply a high restriction, a dedication of land, some sort of setback or such. We did a basic analysis of what we think the view corridor should be. And that's something that we expect the applicant to present as a part of their PDP or their PDPs in the middle would be something that would show that this view corridor is protected and preserved.
Okay, thank you. The next question. First, speaking around the rebuttal of the applicant. He had talked about the need to be able to lot size. But can you walk me through? Should note that, but I'm just curious. So if it's R3.5, does that mean you have to build to R3.5? Or could you build something smaller up there? How does that work backwards? I know what the maximum density is. If your maximum density is R3.5, are you allowed to build less if it's zone that?
Yes. So under the R3.5 Comprehensive Plan designation, the 3.5 is the maximum dwelling units per acre you would be allowed to build. It is not a requirement that you build that. It's not a minimum. Some categories do have a minimum amount of units you have to build. That category does not, so that's the maximum. They could build one house on the entire property and still be in compliance with R3.5. The one thing that they did mention was the minimum lot size requirement. R3.5 has a minimum lot size requirement of 7,000 square feet. That's pretty typical. It used to be in the older comp plans, it was actually an average of 7,000 square feet. So some of the older R3.5 neighborhoods you might see will be ranges around 7,000 square feet. For this development here, as they're proposing to change it to R5, that eliminates that 7,000 square foot minimum lot size, which they could go smaller. I believe yesterday I gave the example of Tuscany Trails and it had about a 4,000 something square foot lot size as an average in the neighborhood.
And that makes sense. And I guess my question comes from, you know, I started thinking about that yesterday. She gave some visual examples. So a visual example to me of R3.5 is my neighborhood is R3.5. It's countryside, I believe. Entirety of the original countryside is R3.5. So I mean, like, my lot is actually pretty small. I don't know what it is in actual lot size. It's not a huge lot. So just trying to visualize what that looks like in some different neighborhoods. By the observatory heights. And the last question, I think, Mr. Mayor, is probably for the applicant. You could decide. In the opening statement of the applicant for the rebuttal, you had talked about some, did I hear right? That, you know, both from the staff and applicant, that we do anticipate greater traffic from E if that change goes forward.
Okay. Yeah, sir, I'm going to, Counselor, I'm going to hand that off. I just want to say, just to address that question first and then hand it to our traffic engineer. I think what we said, sir, is that if you build to the maximum density, right? If you do go to the maximum density, because that's how we should evaluate things, right? Then we could have up to 40 additional units. So just being straightforward about that. So that would add average daily trips because you have additional units. What we don't know is if we can actually meet that maximum density. So that's something that we're going to evaluate. But regardless, what I was saying is whether it's R3.5 or R5, that infrastructure all has to be built to meet your standards. So those standards reflect really what's built there. I will say from a sustainability and all the other factors, that large lot, affordability, attainability, traffic, that really is contrary to the sustainability model. And that's why we think this is actually much more reflective of those goals, specific to traffic, if you want those numbers involved in it.
Yes, so this information is in the packets that you do have. But on B, just going from the 3.5 to the 5, we have 387 ADT average daily traffic, 30 in the AM and 41 in the PM peak conditions. And we've actually, again, we're talking the comp plan here, but we've taken that to a next level in our analysis as part of the PDP. And we've analyzed the intersection at 84th and Lowell and we've analyzed these other intersections that we could have. Plus, what Marcus said is we don't think we'll get to the total unit count here. We think these numbers will only get better. And even at those other intersections, when we analyze them, we still get acceptable levels of service and of course improvements at those intersections because of the improvements that we will be doing with this project.
Thank you. The last thing, I don't know if you could bring up this slide that they had up of the layout would be for that parcel B. I think it's slide 89. I'm trying to understand the difference between the left and the right. On the left, there's a lot more that is being marked as what can be built there. And then the other part is showing the visual corridor. I'm trying to understand exactly what you anticipate actual buildup would look like on that north or south half of parcel B.
I sort of want. So the blue triangle, blue-purple triangle, is a view corridor that is required in your comp plan from what we understand was denoted in your comp plan. It's always something the staff has been pretty clear about. And that is the view corridor that I think people have been asking about, that would require setbacks and high restrictions. However, we volitionally, voluntarily, right, are removing units from the top of that hill, which is the green portion to the south. The left version with more white in it is our old plan. And that's where 3.5 came in, 7,000 square foot lots, larger lots, chewing up more land. The right image is R5, our version of the R5 plan, which provides more part plan and less developable land because of the 7,000 square foot minimum lot going to a smaller neighborhood.
And that makes sense from your presentation. And I guess what I'm trying to bring together and mesh is the fact that that corridor would likely be protected in the PDP because of the comp plan and just wanted to take that. So if you didn't get the R5 and we said we wanted to leave this R3.5, So if you didn't get the R five, and we said we wanted to leave this R three-five, right, then what does this look like?
Our choices, to make some hard choices about less green space, more white space, I don't know. I mean, that's, I guess, putting it simply, it's going to force a larger minimum lot size, which is going to force more developable land, if that makes sense. The purple part, that triangle is something that we've always understood that was going to be a view corridor. The green part is something, frankly, that we sought to lot, to put residential units there instead of park. This change would allow us to devote that top part to park.
Okay, and I understand. So my last question that I really would like to kind of address is, and you talked a little bit about the apartments that are already back up in this north part of this lot, but you haven't really put any visuals to what that looks like. So I'm trying to understand this transition in the whole parcel, because we're not just, you know, I don't have the choice in front of me. Do you have the parcel?
Visuals meaning pictures?
Not necessarily pictures, but paint a picture for me with your words as far as like what that looks like. Is that gonna be exactly the same kind of product on the other half of Redburn Avenue?
Yeah.
You know, how is that transition gonna be from, you know, the three-five?
Right.
To the five and down the hill?
So in terms of typology visually, the units that are in mountain terraces are multiple units, two-to-three story walk-up units. And the units that you'll see in an R five in the north portion of B will be two-story, most likely single-family detached. So you're gonna see something that is scale-wise very similar to those buildings, but much smaller. They're not gonna be as long, but in terms of the height, it'll be very similar, whereas you've got a lot of one-story homes to the west in Shaw Heights and also to the south in Observatory Heights. So we're really trying to transition from two-to-three stories to two-story product to nothing basically, to mostly a mark and open space. To help in terms of typology, you're not gonna see a lot of three, four-story product on the north side of that road there. Our current plan contemplates two-story product, which we mesh with mountain terraces.
Great, thank you very much.
All my questions, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Council members, anyone else have any questions, either the staff or the applicant? Mr. Kelly, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we, it was mentioned several times about the missing middle and how we're trying to provide housing for the missing middle. And so I kept wondering as we were discussing this that, and I don't know where this question goes, I don't know if it goes to staff or it goes to the developer.
Go ahead and ask.
Okay, so this B parcel is designated for R three-point-five. We're proposed, or it's being proposed, R five. How does that affect the cost of the houses? Is there a difference? Do we have any idea if there would be a difference? Because a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house is not actually affordable or attainable, but I understand that it is the gorge rate in this city. I do understand that I own a house, and I'm amazed at how much it is worth, and not sure that I could buy it today, which is interesting. So can you tell me how that would affect the change in the cost?
We'll get to that if we have a person answering the question with the price of product, but from staff.
Councillor, I'm happy to answer it. It's impossible for us at this point to pinpoint the exact price, what it would be as an R three home versus what it would be as, I'm sorry, R three-and-a-half to an R five. I can directionally give you the decisions we make to try to drive pricing down, not up, right? So one of the decisions is less land. Someone mentioned before, you know, I have a seven thousand square foot lot and a thousand square foot house on top of it. The truth is that that could never happen today because of the economics that you all understand very well. You can't put a very small home on a very large lot. Also, it would be watering a lot of sod, frankly. So that's where we start, is really frankly lot size, things like setbacks and things like that, where you give folks lots of parks in the area as opposed to lots of side yards and backyards. That eliminates cost by itself. The next thing we would do is look for typology as opposed to a ranch brick home or a two-story single-family detached with a front-load, two-car garage. There's lots of decisions that we can make to pin and to start to shave off square footage that might be inefficient. And lastly, I think that you have to look at materials, the way the homes used to be built versus materials that are more environmentally sustainable today and frankly are cheaper. They're more, they're sourced from environmentally sustainable sources, not hardwoods, but they're also, they allow us to produce product at a lower product, a lower price for the community. So directionally, while I can't give you prices on what three-and-a-half and R five would, there's three or four things I can point to immediately that would naturally make it cheaper to build in an R five location versus an R three-and-a-half, if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you. So my next question was, we talk a lot about the footprint that we're leaving on our land and building more housing. How, how will the environmental impact be reduced?
There's a number, councillor, there's a number of factors in traditional planning that led to some resource wastage. One of them, we've already talked about, is lot size, the big one. And the other thing is, you know, the components of your parks. You know, if a park is all sod, it uses a lot more water than a mixture of natural materials, natives, and sod. So it starts with landscaping and then things like front yards and tree lots. Those are typically sodded. But what if they were pollinator gardens that required less water off drip lines, more and more water savings? A lot of that water savings is there, and how do we treat landscaping? Traditional suburban model versus a new urbanist model? Beyond that, material, as I mentioned, the materials that are used today are far more sustainable than the materials used just twenty years ago. So materials is another important component that we realize. Lastly, efficiency of the boxes of the units that are built there, whether they be apartment buildings, townhomes, bunkers, quarters, houses, those have hot, much higher efficiency standards than in the past. Furthermore, if they're smaller, they're far more efficient by time. So there's a lot of things we can do to lower our carbon footprint versus a traditional suburban conventional subdivision. And there's lots of great research out there that can quantify it. It's pretty complex stuff. We haven't modeled it, because you have to have a lot of details towards the end. We'd have to be in a plan process to kind of model it. But directionally, I can assure you, it's far more efficient resource-wise.
What is the predicted square footage of the homes?
I don't know. There'd be, there'd be a lot of classifications of homes here, right? So there'd be an apartment, a rental apartment, which would have one average square footage that would make sense to you. And then there would be a lot of other for-sale product, right? So a single-family detached, single-family detached. I frankly, councillor, I don't know the average of all those product lines. I just, I don't have it.
Thank you. We talked about how this land was designated for thirty-eight hundred units, and this, by changing the designation of the land, we'd be taking it to twenty-three hundred units? Is that what I understood?
I just want to address that, and I was trying to kind of make it clarity of the five parcels today, because I think a lot of people just want to talk about should develop and occur or not. So my point was, in all five parcels that are not before you tonight, the comp plan allows thirty-eight hundred plus units just today, okay? Whether we're here, whether we're the applicant or not. What we are here to ask for, as you know, are three amendments, up to forty units on parcel B, one hundred and fifty-six units up to one hundred and fifty-six units instead of three hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of office and then open space. So we are talking total cumulative in our three amendments, about one hundred and ninety-six units is what we're here to. So I was trying to separate that. I think people just tried to understand what is the overall impact of that. And I want to say to that, that's the process that we all have to go through together. That's still coming. We just believe these amendments are consistent with your vision for the city that's been the guiding documents.
Thank you. Originally, I missed this somehow, what was parcel E originally designated? What was gonna go there?
So it's currently designated office.
And you're going to put a park there. Still, it still stresses me that there's no affordable or attainable or senior housing considered in B, D, or E. E, that aside, but B and D. And that is kind of weighing heavy on me.
Sure.
And I don't want to get into A because it's not on the table tonight, so I, you know. So why wasn't there any consideration of attainable, affordable? I know it's been called attainable. That is a question in my mind.
So here's the, I want to just answer your question directly as it relates to these complanements. The existing parcel A or parcel B is R three-and-a-half. That is by definition the most unaffordable product that you have, okay? So that is the most expensive product you have in your code today because it's the largest all over, okay? So making this change makes us have the ability to have attainable products, right? So this is the first opportunity we're actually moving towards smaller, compact, more attainable product. Without it, we can never achieve that. That's by definition, right? So the very thing you're asking for is why we're making that change. Parcel D, it's office. There is no housing there. So we're adding a diversity. There may be, R eight could have different ranges, different house types there. So we're not saying at all that there's not gonna be affordable or attainable. We're saying we need these amendments to actually move to that. And that discussion about capital A affordable, right, kind of the thirty to sixty percent AMI, or attainability from eighty to one hundred and forty percent AMI, that all comes forward in the PDP. I can assure you, it does not happen on parcels B or D without these complanements.
There's, I think it's number nine that really, and councillor Smith really addressed this in the beginning, but I want to go back and revisit it. The proposed amendment will not negatively impact for all agencies, and Colorado Department of Transportation is named specifically. Can you address at all how, you talked about a crossing at eighty-sixth Federal, and frankly, we've had some issues working on Federal, which is why we're now going to have a study. So I'm just curious, how are you going to get a crossing at eighty-sixth Federal?
Absolutely, and I'm gonna let our traffic engineer answer that more specifically. But one thing I want to say, those two referral comments that were mentioned by C-DOT and also Adams County, those were about the overall site. As you know, none of these amendments actually touch Federal, right, besides the one quarter of D. So that's actually something that we have to continue to work through. So we know that those have to be addressed. The opportunity that we have on this site is actually to revive the connectivity, the sidewalks, the porosity, the roadways through the site. Without these, the development of that, that's what brings that forward. So again, I concur entirely with those referral comments, but those were made to the overall site. I would specifically say, look at the content of the Adams County. It said, "We want sidewalks, we want connections, we want street improvements." They talked about the very things that we want in these parcels.
From a C-DOT perspective, as part of this comp plan, we don't really give a detailed traffic report. However, as I mentioned before, we have done a detailed traffic report as part of our PDP process. And so the C-DOT referral comment, I think spurs some of, or a lot of their comments spur from that actual report. And so what I can tell you is that we have worked closely with them. We're also setting a meeting with the city and C-DOT to try to work more collaboratively on making sure that the improvements that we're talking about, the mitigation elements that we're talking about, are actually something that we can all get on board with. Because some of our initial meetings, it was really more a matter of, okay, we got the traffic report, can you tell us about your site and go through that stuff? So we've actually sat down with them, and we've explained all of the elements that we have along their corridor. Obviously, the safety improvements that we'll just mention are of major concern for them. There's also accident data that we've been looking at and talking through, and how do we try to solve some of those issues that are out there right now? We talked about the connection, the pedestrian connection going back over to the school at Crown Point. Those are all considerations that we really dug into deep. But again, not as part of the comp plan process, we really don't go down that road that far. We're only looking at a high level, thirty-thousand-foot level. But we have, I can tell you, from our PDP perspective, gotten into the details, and we are furthering that discussion along with the city helping us there to have that discussion and get into that more detail there. So I think a lot of those comments that you saw were on the initial report that we put together. We addressed a lot of those comments actually, and resolved most of those. It's really now just getting to that final point, like I say again, to go through the final details and some of those agreements on what are gonna happen at those intersections.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So some of the questions are for staff, some are for the applicant. So first, yeah, and witnesses for staff. Do we have any type of artwork designation, public artwork designation as part of these projects?
Yes, councillor. So the city does have a public art requirement that applies to commercial development or industrial office developments, and it applies in the T-Mund category as well. It does, and sorry, it also applies to multifamily. So it's not something that we consider at the comprehensive plan stage. It will come up in the official development plan, and then depending on the priority of the city, will either take public art or we will take cash balloon.
As the orchard that has been discussed in public comment, they consider for open space?
So councillor, I'm glad you brought that up. So the orchard is not an orchard. Those are not apple trees, they're not fruit-bearing trees. They are honey locusts, and they are green ash trees. Our city forester has been onto the property himself. He has assured me that of what the trees are. I have seen them myself, I can tell you they are not orchard trees. Our estimate is that the trees are actually placed there as part of tree farm, and probably because they wanted the north slope, because it stayed more moist. As far as considering it for open space, that's a comment generally for the PDP, and we're not necessarily thinking of dedicating or requiring that as public land dedication. It is part of what we would designate as the view corridor, and would be left to not be developed.
In the report, excuse me, not the report, in the items that were as part of attachments, there was talk of a potential pedestrian underpass. Is that still a consideration by staff?
Jason, you want to answer that? Good evening, councillor. Jason, getting direct to Parks Recreation and Libraries, and your question was, there's reference to consideration of an underpass.
Under Federal, yes.
Under Federal, yeah. So that would be another thing that we would evaluate when we do get further along in the planning phase. But I will say that as Parks Recreation and Libraries director, certainly, one of my considerations that I'm gonna provide input on is the entire mobility of that area. We have opportunities that we can improve the mobility that need to be seriously considered if this plan is for. An underpass was discussed as a concept. It's a great regional park, for example, Highland Hills Park, and we need to make sure people have safe access, and underpass is one of the things we talked about.
Thank you. And I believe the rest of the questions are for the applicant. And I believe that you had mentioned this, but could you refresh my memory and just quickly summarize how long this group has been working on this project?
Councillor Smith, we have been in discussions with the land seller for, how many, almost six, seven years or so, in terms of our involvement with the city and its staff, that would be about two and a half years or so.
There was a comment in the public comment process that the land isn't purchased, and this kind of goes back to councillor Demont's question about what would it mean if we didn't approve a three-point-five to a five as far as building this area?
So councillor Smith, I think the question, I'll try to take a stab at, what happens if any of these, these don't get approved? And that includes the comp plan before you, the comp plan amendments before you this evening. It also includes any PDP or any other hearings that we have for you. Every hearing, or every one of these approvals is conditional upon the land seller conveying the property. So if this project is never approved and the land seller never conveys the property, none of these approvals become effective. That's to ensure that, you know, approve something that lasts forever when you know it doesn't, it's not going to happen, so to ensure there's no remnant of approvals out there. there. In terms of what happens if we don't get approval for one specific parcel, was that your other question, Counselor Smith?
Yeah, yes.
I, I really can't tell you, to be honest with you. I think that's a decision for our team. Ultimately, the buck stops with me, but we would consult internally to see what kind of consequence that would have for us and the land plan. As I mentioned before, you know, we're, we're attempting to put together the land, the best land plan that we can, and we believe that R five accomplishes that.
Going back to traffic, what's the right of way on Federal and Lowell for widening?
Counselor Smith, give us a moment while we might look up something. In fact, why don't we get back to you, if that's okay, on that question? We'll look it up in our files and get back to you on that question.
Just because I, prior to me being non-counsel, I attended one of your open houses at Crown Point, and I believe that at that time, the only improvement would be the turn lanes as far as continuous length, the acceleration lanes. And so that's why when, I think it was mentioned that there would be widening, so it seems like there was more thought into increasing these roadways. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes. There is road sections that will be widened on Lowell, in particular between eighty fourth and eighty eighth. And the engineer mentioned that that will chew into the Uplands Land to the east as opposed to right into the west. And I think those improvements, I cannot, without the plans, Counselor Smith, I can't tell you what the specific improvements are. Some of them include acceleration and deceleration lanes, but also include bike lanes, sidewalks, improvement, et cetera. Other through lanes, I don't know if our engineer may be giving some more detail. Hey, Counselor Smith, I'm going to give you some information that's actually on the PDP that we have, and these are still items that we're working through with the city. So in, in general, the question on Federal is, is what is the existing right of way right now? It's about a hundred foot. Ultimately, we're looking at about a hundred and twenty, maybe a hundred and thirty in some locations. And what we've discussed so far is that you think about Federal between eighty fourth and eighty eighth, it's currently two lanes in each direction, and there's a shoulder out there. We actually formalize that shoulder into a through movement or turn lanes or auxiliary lanes that you're talking about through there. So that, that's just a general description of what we are currently talking about. On the Lowell side, what you have is a right of way that's about sixty feet. I'm looking at some of these sections, and we're going to go to about seventy-five to eighty-five feet. And what that accommodates is, if you think about it, we're, we're not really touching, if we're talking the, the section between eighty fourth and eighty eighth, we're really not touching the, the current residents that are out there today. They'll have their sidewalk, they'll have their parking, but we're adding bike lanes in each direction. And we're also adding, of course, walk and so forth on our side to increase that mobility through this area. So that, that's really what starts to make up that general cross section that we do have there, and, and also parking on our side is added. That's where we, we start to push out, you know, obviously, we're twenty, twenty-five feet in some areas of additional area that we're adding.
And my last question, and it speaks to number six, is the proposed amendment for there's an important public policy as in the protection of historic resources. Can you speak to your project in, and you may have said it, but I didn't grasp it, so which is why I'm asking, is how is the project protecting these historic resources?
Counselor Smith, thank you for your question. The most important role that we play in protecting historic resources out on the side is to make sure that the church keeps the Hundred Acres roughly, that they're keeping, which contains the, the only historic structures and sites on this entire project. That building, the castle, is actually on the National Historic Register, has been since nineteen seventy-nine. Our funds that we're paying for this land will allow that church to continue to operate in their mission and therefore protect that architectural treasure.
Thank you. That's my question.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you so much, and thank you for all of the questions from the residents and the answers that the applicant and staff has provided. I think that residents did a great job raising a lot of questions. If I don't ask one of your questions, it's because tonight I am strictly supposed to weigh the marginal difference between the current complan zoning and the request. And so I'm trying to try to focus my questions on those, but, so bear with me. Multiple residents asked questions that I don't, I think that Counselor Smith just started to, to address, which is, we, we talked a lot about the transitions to different residential development type or business and commercial development type. But this is a unique situation where we have this castle, this hundred-year-old castle adjacent to the process and our project, proposed project. Can we talk about planning principles when you have something like this? What type, what is typical comprehensive plan, what type of transitions do we see around subjects like that? Recognizing that it is somewhat unique, but we've talked about planning principles when it comes to other types of developments, so I've been wondering if we can get a refresher on that.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. So I'd be glad to answer that question. I, I think from my studies of planning, usually a large civic amenities such as the castle or historic resource usually becomes the focal point of a development, and development usually centers around that and focuses a lot of that. If you look at more grandiose things such as DC, they build things such as the mall and that kind of this public space which surrounds those historic resources and provides a space for people to gather around that. So you could see something as a park or some sort of avenue, you know, a tree-lined avenue that would lead towards the castle and kind of frame it as a vista or something, in the end of the large street. Various types of housing and large development can be common around there. I think that this is kind of an interesting question you have because the castle itself is not in city limits. The city does not have municipal jurisdiction over the castle property, and it's not part of the request for them to annex it inside the city limits. That's one of their applications is to annex a small portion of the property. So we largely don't have control over the small campus around the actual castle itself, so we would only have the ability to kind of frame development on parcel A or parcel B to kind of enhance that property. Given that we have a view corridor which designates across parcel B and kind of says there shall be, there shall be no development and that view corridor shall be preserved, it kind of limits what we would kind of consider of putting any sort of large development near those, those historic resources. So we couldn't put an apartment complex, or we couldn't put commercial retail opportunities for people to use when they are at that historic property. But I think that if you look at some of the other large historic resources, even in Colorado, but in this, this state Capitol Building or such, they're usually surrounded by a park and then other government facilities and retail commercial opportunities along with housing.
Because we are trying to focus on this marginal change, can we describe why having residential R eight is preferable over office for parcel D? And then also as part of that question, can I ask, what are the typical, and I recognize there's going to be a huge variation depending on the type of business, but a three hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot office building roughly, I mean, we were able to do trip counts roughly, how many employees would that be? Sorry.
Let me start with the, it was the three, the R eight, why would that be beneficial? So getting rid of the office land use, when that was analyzed by this, this city in coordination with the economic development staff, it was determined that that office designation is not necessary to our kind of goals of creating more office space in the city or just in the neighborhood in this area. We have other vacant office spaces that could be leased out that are underutilized, and there is more vacant land with office designation that could be built. Some of our business, some of our office industrial parks still are not built out as well throughout the city. This, the change to R eight residential, originally the applicant actually was asking for R eighteen, and city staff scaled them back to R eight, and that had a lot to do with total water usage and the adjacency to other uses. R eight, we think will work with the grade. It does provide a variety of like housing products that would be allowed, and that is under the twenty seventeen Housing Needs Assessment, a priority that we believe City Council had under that twenty seventeen Housing Needs Assessment. So we think that R eight would satisfy those, those two priorities there. It could be buildable. The three hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of office, that's just, as I think Marcus had alluded to, we were planning for the max when we did this analysis. That would be essentially the maximum amount of office square footage that somebody could build on a site. I do not think that's realistic, that anybody could ever build three hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet. And I don't think that the traffic engineer who reported, who did the traffic summaries thought that either because they actually reduced that number down to about a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, if you look at their traffic summaries. So they actually were only thinking of building about half of that total square footage of office if somebody were to ever build that. As far as employee count, I mentioned the employee count would be in the several hundred, so three hundred to five hundred employees for an office building that size.
For an office building, I'm sorry, you, you mentioned that you didn't think it would ever be to the three hundred and twenty-five thousand, so are you meaning for the one that they did the traffic account for at about?
Yeah, so offices are usually built somewhere between eighty square feet to a hundred square feet per employee. So that's, I'll have to do the math here.
Sorry.
Get a calculator.
It feels relevant because that's when you're comparing the difference.
So I'm going to do it off the hundred and sixty thousand square feet instead of the three hundred and twenty, unless you like moving people.
I'd like to do both because I think if we're, if we're comparing with the max of density that they could have at R eight, we should probably like do both of that range if we have that high number as well.
Sure. So if they did a hundred and sixty thousand square feet and there was a ratio of one employee to a hundred square feet of office space, that'd be sixteen hundred employees, and then three hundred and twenty, double of that, so three hundred and twenty, or thirty-two hundred employees potentially.
There was a, a question raised, and I recognize that this will get much more defined if, if it was to go through the next, to the PDP process, but it is one of the standards that we have to look at. There seemed to be an assertion from a resident that if we were to go to smaller lot sizes, it would create a more runoff and more drainage problems. My presumption is that our requirements to handle drainage contemplate smaller lot sizes, but can you speak to that? That would be, wouldn't that, my, my understanding is that would be the developer's responsibility regardless.
Answer is yes. Go ahead.
Answer is yes. Drama, right? Yes, obviously, we have city requirements to follow, and that is one thing that I, that I probably should have touched on before in my summary as well, is this project again is bringing a, a great improvement to the area because if you think about the land today, there are no detention facilities, there are no water quality facilities that are out there today just to take the historic runoff coming from here. And you already get flooding that happens down Shaw. This project actually will not only mitigate its drainage flow, it'll cut that flow down even more to even less historic to accommodate what is, what is the existing infrastructure that's out there for the city today. We're talking about larger lots compared to smaller lots, you know, if we're talking seven thousand square foot lots and we're, we're actually have sawed on all that compared to smaller lots in that R five range, a lot of times what you see there is the numbers are pretty close to being the same when you, when you think about it in the overall context. You make it a little bit more when you're talking R five because we introduce alleys into that situation. Those are less impervious areas. But again, no matter what we would create there, we would still handle all of those flows before they ever got off site. And again, our project would probably mitigate those down to less than what they're seeing today.
That's very different.
Because of what, because there's no infrastructure there today at all. Hopefully that helps.
Thank you very much. No, that's fine.
Thank you.
Counselor Smith, I wanted to provide a separate analysis of your office employment category because we did do this as part of our analysis of looking at the office lots. If, a different perspective, and I kind of quoted you on what would be the maximum that most people build under the building code for office occupancy. So under the comprehensive plan on page two dash thirty-one in table two, one, we provide a ratio of jobs to the total building square feet in the city. And on parcel E, or parcel D, assuming that they built a three hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot building, under the ratio of what most employment uses or commercial spaces or office uses are, are currently employed at, that would be six hundred and seventy-nine jobs. And so it, I think it would largely depend on the employer and the type of business that was ultimately put in there and how much space that is reserved for uses that are not just dedicated to office space for employees.
We heard a little bit, there were some questions, I believe, earlier on from Counselor Smith, and then also, I believe, a resident who lives in Bradburn talked about density of the various projects. I was wondering if you could give us a comparative zoning. I recognize there's multiple property complan zoning or land use definitions within Bradburn, but could you let us know what those are? Maybe you might not have that off the top of your...
Yeah, so Counselor, so Bradburn has, and the zoning designation is planned unit development. The comprehensive plan land use designation for Bradburn is just one category and it's T-Mund.
Oh, T-Mund.
Entire thing is T-Mund.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Can you remind me of the full acreage for the size of Lot E?
Yes, Lot, parcel E is, we refer to it as one point two acres.
One point two acres. I guess I have some concern, if please stop me if this is more appropriate for another, if this is not appropriate for my consideration for the complan, but I do have some concern about this being used as a portion of the PLD. The same reasons that it wasn't very accessible for its current designation, like there's not road access, makes it to me not that valuable of a piece of public park or public open space.
So Counselor Smith, I would say that that's something that we are discussing as part of the PDP, and I'll just allude to it now, the city staff does not think that would be valuable for the city to take as public land dedication. The parcel does have a sewer list station on it, we already have an easement for that, we have an easement for our utility lines, and we don't think it would be a valuable addition to the city's ownership assets as public land dedication. And they can use it as part of the private land, or part of their private park requirement for some of their property.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that the city shares my concern then. I have a question about one of the stipulations that is requested, the delayed effective date of this ordinance to be specifically tied to the land sale of the property, and that this complan would be void, this document would be void if that was to not go through. For me, I'm looking at this rationally, and if this is the highest and best use of the land and it's most in compliance with the goals and objective of our complan and other plans, why would we not just want that indefinitely? Why would we ask for that to be conditional?
Ms. Staker?
It's, there's a contract between the seller and the purchaser, and that was a requirement of their purchase and settlement. But so that if they didn't enclose on the property, then the entitlements would not be... And I know the applicant, we're determining that. And I know the applicant, they're a termine attorney as well.
Good evening, my name is Sarah Rockwell from the Law Department, Kaplan-Herson Rockwell, and I represent the applicant. And that's correct, what Ms. Decker said is that the property owner does not want any of these entitlements to actually apply to the property unless a closing occurs. Which is why we have the delayed effective date. This particular, the ordinance is, with regard to the comp plan amendments as well as any future approvals that come forward will have the same delay in the effective date.
Thank you, I appreciate that and understand that's where the providence of it. My concern from a public policy point of view is the reason that local government has a restriction over land use is because it's to promote a public benefit, to promote a public policy. So I guess my kept questions briefly are about those, let me keep on this couch. Thank you so much. I have one last question, or actually two more. There was a comment that twenty-six percent of the cities currently are three point five. That, that statement is based off of land, land size, correct? Not based off percentage of residences?
Correct, that's based off land area and I believe the applicant quoted that from the comprehensive plan.
Okay, do we know what it is, percentage of residences?
I believe it's in the comp plan, I could look it up and see if I can get you an answer.
I don't have it memorized, so. And I would appreciate it. Yeah, I apologize. I have a note that says, reference Mr. Palmer's question, and I'm trying to look and see which question it specifically was, I apologize. It didn't rank strong enough, so. Okay. Thank you, I found it. I believe a resident, Mr. Palmer. Stated that our traffic impact study and the water resource study were based off of data from twenty thirteen. My question for staff is, is that accurate or are those iterative documents? So they're. They're not static in time, but they have considered the developments and changes that occurred in those corridors during that period of time? Or are they using twenty thirteen data? And I apologize if that was poorly spoken.
Yeah, can you just repeat that because we're both trying to focus on that.
I believe that there was a statement, one of the resident's statements, that the traffic impact study. And the water resource impact analysis were both used, or both using data that was from twenty thirteen. So seven-year-old data to determine the impacts. And I'm asking, was that correct? Or has it, have the changes that have occurred in the area, were those considered? When the, what was the data at the time point of the data?
So, yeah, maybe your project sites, so the traffic, do you, basically the traffic analysis are based on ITE codes. And it's just a static analysis as how much traffic is generated by use type. It has nothing to do with the city's comp plans. We use a, I believe, internationally recognized document from an engineer, from engineers to generate those figures. And that's what the applicant uses as well. It's not something that we had, we created inside of our county. The city did not create and adopt those standards as part of this comp plan. The water supply plan that I believe Mr. Palmer was referring to. So the city created a water supply plan in twenty thirteen as part of, in the comprehensive plan. And linked those two together, that water supply plan is, and what we're using for analysis for these amendments is from that twenty thirteen water supply, supply plan.
Matt Kirschbaum from the Markstir to do a bit into that. I think Jacob stated it well, I would just say it's still valid, it's still accurate because what was done in twenty thirteen is essentially water budgets were established and assigned to land use classifications. So it's, it remains valid and for the two and a half years that we've been working together, we, one, one area that we certainly have had agreement upon is that. That the total water usage as, as they would foresee it for across all of the parcels would be within what we've established as the water budgets for the sum of the five.
Thank you, and then I, I need to follow up on the traffic question quickly. So the traffic data that we get, doesn't it take into consideration the capacity of the existing corridors with the existing traffic? So what I'm wondering is, has it considered? I guess the capacity because of all of the other development that's occurred within the capacity and this incremental in addition.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, you're my transportation engineer. So yes, the applicant does traffic counts and does the analysis based on the numbers that they recorded at that time. It is not based on the comp plan. The last time that the city had a comprehensive roadway master plan was in two thousand and eight. And we're currently underway our transportation and mobility plan, which will update some of those numbers. But the applicant did do current day traffic counts and that is what is used for the analysis.
Thank you very much. Those are all my questions, thank you.
Counselor Sykes, I have an answer for you on the question you had. So in, in the comprehensive plan, you were asking about how many units are R three point five. The only data I have available for that right now is from table two dash one. And this is grouping R three point five and R five together. And it's that in existing development in twenty thirteen had twenty-five thousand, six hundred and sixty-five units. And the total residential units in the city, excuse me, the total residential units in the city were forty-four thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine.
Alright, okay.
Alright, Counselor, this time I'm going to give you a couple of options. One, there may be a question that was presented, and you're trying to attempt to answer, that may be of value. Move into an executive session, let her answer that from a legal standpoint. You mean, if you have any other questions from a legal standpoint, we would also entertain those in executive session. However, if there are none, skip an executive session. But I would recommend to you, take a few minutes to gather your thoughts. You would take a break for a period of time to give her a chance to look at their notes, think about what their thoughts are. But I would close all the public hearing, there would be no more questions of staff or the applicant. But the testimony from the public is already closed. Is there anyone who feels they want to have that opportunity? Ms. Decker, I'll turn to you first.
We don't go into executive session, there is one thing I would like to put forward.
Thank you. Any question from any member of the council that would like to go into an executive session, receive any kind of legal guidance from the city attorney?
Actually, I have a follow-up question, I'll hold one on the question of one of the other councils. Go down. The applicant, you had said when we were talking about the difference between R three five and R five, you talked a lot about what you can do with the lot as well as the building material. And imagine, either way, from what I've seen of your development, some of those things are going to happen no matter what the designation is. Imagine you're going to try to use sustainable building materials and try to do best practices with, you know, lower water consumption. No matter with the lots, I just wanted you to clarify that, did you use that as kind of a reasoning? Or the R five versus R three five?
Sure. Counselor, happy to answer the question. I think the question, if I misunderstood the question, I can restate it, but I think the question was, what are some of the things that you would use to use to be more sustainable? R five versus R three, what are some of the primary differences? If, you know, you're flying, you know, the way we built R three, R three and a half versus R five, I think the primary difference would probably be the water usage associated with irrigation and landscaping of that lot. And I think, and I'm going to go out on a limb here, my engineer will tell me if I'm wrong, I'm thinking over half of the water consumption in a home like that is exactly for that yard. And so it's actually a huge portion of your home's water consumption is watering your yard. So I think the primary difference in just isolating sustainability between the way we would build R three and a half and then the way we would build R five would be that water consumption. In terms of sustainable, sustainable building materials, I agree with you, there's no reason that we would use it for some classifications and not others. So that clarifies it for you.
It does, I'm just trying to think through this in terms of discussion for general, even in R three five. Just trying to understand exactly where you're going to get the three, but I could explain, you guys are developing, wishing.
Ms. Decker.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. At the request of the applicant, if City Council will not agree to the delayed effective date, the application indeed into the drawn. So that would be all three amendments. If the City Council will not agree to that.
So that's right.
Was there any questions, Counselor?
It does, though if, if, say for example, they did, or can you through one of these, the, it wouldn't approve that, that, that portion. Does that then withdraw their whole application for all parts?
It would just withdraw the application for this.
With that parcel.
Wait, let me clarify the question, are you asking if you don't want to agree to the delayed effective date on just one of the?
I'm saying so technically, even through this, if we didn't say agree to F two, which is one of the parcels. And thereby, that effective date for that parcel would be the play right because we didn't agree to the amendment for that one.
Right.
Then does that give all of their applications outward, does it even take that application? As part of?
Well, that application would just be, I see what you're saying.
So then that one would go away with the other ones would continue?
It would still just be denied because what they don't, the intent is that the entitlement not be in place until they do. The denial would still be applicable, but it would not affect you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor, Counselors, may I provide a little bit of background on this petition? Cause there's been some discussion about it, some questions. You know, I've been in this business for, gosh, over two decades now, both as an attorney and now as a developer. And this is really typical of very large, complex projects as opposed to the subdivision level projects. There's so much that gets very, very specific to this specific project and more so in the PDP and onward. And if that specific project was truly tied to our team, was not ultimately, we didn't ultimately close on the property and enact that. It's very, very, very typical across a lot of jurisdictions in Colorado, which we've researched. Or the seller, which they have done in this case, not us to demand that. And so that is a seller requirement. And we have had extensive conversations with the legal department in the city over a number of months to make sure this is legal. I'll let your senior legal counsel address you in terms of how legal it is. But I wanted to make sure that you all understand this is something that is pretty typical for large land sellers to ensure that something doesn't bind them, that they didn't actually design themselves. And they are not developers, so. I, I've probably been a, been a party for a heck to a half a dozen of these over the fifteen master plans that I've done. And it's pretty typical as we've discussed with each other.
And so I'm concerned, when there isn't denial, there is not an ordinance. So it just wouldn't, it wouldn't be.
That makes sense, I'm just curious, since this is for you.
Right, it wouldn't have to be the other two.
Other questions from everyone, Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So I, I don't mean to be dense here, I'm just trying to really get clarity. So if we were to deny it as a council tonight, it would revert, it would be done, it would come off the table. And everything would revert back to the current zoning of three point five?
It would just stay the same, yes.
It doesn't revert back, but we haven't changed it.
So the developers saying they would not develop the land if we denied it tonight? I, I guess I understood at one point that if we denied, you would probably still continue forward with approval or development?
Yeah, so Counselor Scully, I think this question's kind of batting about like what happens if, if one portion of the three amendments is denied. It's probably a question we really can't answer for you in terms of, this is, these are amendments that were requested by your staff and, and backed by your planning commission. So to be really frank, we have not contemplated either one or all three failing and what our actions would be thereafter. I know that's not the answer that snaps it together for you, but I'm on it, just being honest with you, it is a question mark.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Ms. Decker, I, just to clarify, we're not approving or disproving the effective date. We're approving or disproving the, or not approving the parcel amendments, correct? That's correct, but the effective date language is included within the ordinance.
Ms. Sykes?
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's right.
I also just wanted to clarify on that, on the effective date comment, which is that your code in section eight point three. Stakes that the effective date of all ordinances shall be the date of enactment after passage on second reading or as prescribed therein. So you have the ability to delay the effective date in the ordinance itself in the C W language.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a question. Or do you want to have a question for Jill? Okay, I would like to make a motion to enter into executive session with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice concerning. The standards for approval of land use plan amendments pursuant to CRS in section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B and section one dash eleven dash three. C three of the Westin's Trimester Code, specifically for the Hufflands Development.
Second, if we have a motion, if the second element's by, Counselor, you want? Got a question? At this point, all those in favor are turning into an executive session. The consensus is, right, the motion is signified by aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? You're going to adjourn and. I don't know yet. Yeah, I think there's some questions. At this point, it's quite benign, fine, we will adjourn into the next session and back to the next.
Oh, down, down.
Thank you very much.
You okay? Want to keep taking it in there? Want to keep taking it in there?
The board meeting we went to.
Eight years ago, you said.
And it has to change.
Well, maybe after that. Well, see, remember the old dog that gives them that?
Yeah.
Right.
They had the. My water bottle. The water. Okay.
I agree.
Appreciate yous more.
I haven't. I said, what, what? He said, well, the only issue costs me. So. You got it all down? Over twelve costs me. On a, on a $20 million project. Okay, good. They gave them. Do the reason. Well, at that. You, you know, your tank. Pressure is. Well, they love it. A 40-foot column water. The water system pressure. So that, that water tank doesn't have a tank. Why they company.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let me tell you where you're at. If you just stay there where you're at, we're not coming back in. So we have been able to get our questions from the attorneys answered. However, we have gathered a lot of information and thoughts last night, tonight. A couple of council members would like to go through their notes, make sure that they're prepared to come out and render a decision. I told them, as soon as they are all seated, we will call a meeting back to order. 10 to 15 minutes is what I think they're going to be looking at, just to go through and review if they can be prepared. So if I can, please relax for a bit. If you need to go outside, that's okay. I will ask you to stay out of and away from the door, wait on the boardroom so they can talk behind themselves. Be back hopefully in about 15 minutes.
Sometimes they go the watch so much.
Yeah.
Finally, ten years.
Yeah. Yeah. Good. Oh, yeah. Jumping. Tomorrow. This. Yes. Yes. And then. Seven. All right. I'm gonna do that. I'm gonna take it. That's it. I grab. Yeah. Which now. And so. Oh, cool. That's fine. So. Yeah.
Yeah. How that? Yeah. You were putting. Poppy.
I never heard.
Fresh. Yeah. That's what you have. You know. The alcohol. Yeah. Two. Yeah.
It's nice.
I'm. Oh, my God. I'm just. Really smart. Wait, not.
Yeah. What a man.
I'm. But I'm like. You know. This. Okay. Anyway. Yeah. We care that. My health is small. Because my sister uses. And. And. Have a. And all the council. They tell me. I don't. Have. I'm. I can't. And. Yeah. I'm. Shut. Yeah. I'm. You were. You know. I'm. It's. That's. It's. Things are going. Here. Stop.
Yeah.
He's. Actually. As I. There. He comes. Arms.
Nice. So. Arms.
And then. And we look.
Some. Should. Yeah.
Yes. All.
Right.
I don't. I did. Yeah. No. I just. I.
Oh.
She got. There. I'm. I'm. The. I'm.
Sure. So. First.
And they. Like. It's. A lot. Oh, my God. Of course. I'm.
Oh.
Well, they're. They want. I thought. He's.
I'm. So. I'm. Yeah. Yeah. She's. Oh. You. Oh. You see. I know. I grabbed. I was just. I need this.
Quit. She. She. He. She.
I think. She. In the. Cars.
And forty.
Yeah. Yeah. Each. Oh, yeah. Sorry.
They're.
Yes. 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 Bruce. If you ever wanted to win, please take. Who's? Okay, at this time in the process, we have completed all public comments. We have had final comments and rebuttal from the property owner and applicant. All final comments from staff and the city staff and their recommendations has been noted. Council has completed all the questioning. This time, the public hearing being closed. Next item on the agenda will be the motion for item. F two, which is council bill number three. That's all we need to vote. Ms. Colley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to pass council's bill number three, first reading to approve the proposed comprehensive plan amendment for parcel B, a request to change the land use designation from residential R three point five to residential R dash five. This recommendation is based on a finding that the amendment generally meets the criteria set forth in section eleven dash five dash twenty-one B of the Westminster Municipal Code.
There's a second to the motion. I should say more.
Second.
Motion is second. Counselor, you had a lot of time. Question. But if anyone has any comments they'd like to make. What? Counselor, this is a whole call.
I'm sorry. It's.
Right, Ms. Slade.
Um, so I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Um, this is a very difficult decision for multiple reasons. Um, one is because there is really no other side like this in Westminster to make a determination um, or to. I give myself precedent on, on what to do with this site. Also, it's because of the constraints that I have right now to make my determination. We are really bound by the, the ten criteria that we have before us. So. Struggled a lot with this. There were comments that were made that I jotted down as we went that really have been kind of guiding me. I, I do agree that right now we have to focus on what is the public purpose? The best public purpose? What is orderly growth? Um, that's the goal of our comp plan. That's the goal of us when we're evaluating any amendment is to determine how do we marry those two? Um, so that we're serving the residents um, of today and tomorrow. Um, and also honoring our legacy and what people enjoy about this community. And I heard a lot from the community, you guys enjoy your breathing room. Love your neighborhood. Um. I also heard from the developer that they're very community centered. Value and vision in mind. And while I applaud their idea of attainable by design, um, neither that way as heavily in my decision because I do believe the market will dictate the prices to some degree. I recognize at a smaller scale, R five is always going to be um, more affordable than a R three point five of a similar design standard. So. So, looking at that. Um. I am going to make a lot of people unhappy right now, but I am going to support this amendment based on the, the criteria we have. But it is shaky. I will tell you, I am very concerned that this just meets the threshold of a comp plan change. Specifically items seven and eight. Um, I really hope will be addressed in the PDP and I will be looking very closely to make sure that they are. We know that this will have an impact um, on our our infrastructure, um, on our transportation, on our drainage, um, on our parks and open spaces. That has been discussed in our, in our point that our staff has recommended that this has met that, that threshold. I want to see what is going to happen with the PDP and I want to be looking at that closely because my goal is to serve this community now and in the future, and I have concerns about the sustainability of something that would have such a great impact on us. Um. I am very concerned about the uniqueness of this neighborhood. And so, we'll need to see what this looks like in the PDP process to see how that transitions. This is very different than anything I've ever done. Um, this is really our meansake. Um, I drive by this every single day. Um, and, and look at those beautiful views and I know that there is not a drop of hyperbole in the amount of love and affection that every single resident um, views to describe those views and how worried they are about losing them. Um, and, and they're not alone. Anyone who drives on Lowell or on Federal, I think shares that concern. Um. But I do have a duty to process and I do have a duty to follow the ordinances that we have equipped. And I feel that we've met this threshold and so I am going to be voting to go forward with this, this plan. But I will um, admit that I am going to have a very cautious eye on the next steps. So, thank you for all of your time. I'm sorry to disappoint you. Um, but I have to do what I think is, is right by what I'm charged with.
Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank staff, applicants, more importantly, our residents for coming out and staying with us for two nights uh, and really telling us our thoughts. Some of you have noted that these aren't easy decisions for us and I thank you for recognizing that because I don't take uh, decisions lightly. As a candidate last year, I heard residents say that um, they weren't opposed to growth, that they want it responsible and strategic. Um, I also have major concerns when past councils have changed comprehensive plans. Um, I think that this has outbalanced um, us in a lot of ways. But when you look at these as three um, individual parcels, it's, it's clear that we are taking this out of the comp plan of what we said in two thousand thirteen. But as a whole, when we're looking at five parcels, we're reducing what's allowed from thirty-eight hundred units to twenty-three hundred units. And by that, as a whole, I think that we're taking into account the pros and cons. The pros that I've heard are that it adds diversity in housing and has owner occupied as opposed to apartments. It wouldn't negatively impact our schools. It provides updated and upgraded drainage and sidewalk, sidewalks. And will benefit local businesses and will be attractive for employers and employees. Some of the cons, and this is where I will be specifically looking in the PDP and PUD, is the traffic on Federal and Lowell. Do we have enough water and infrastructure? That will always be a concern um, for residents and at the top of uh, councils' concern on infrastructure. That will always be a concern um, for residents and at the top of uh, councils' concerns. Density is a concern in comprehensive plan changes. And looking at the pros and cons of all of these, we do have to abide by our ten criteria um, that's set before us. And overall, um, I will be approving this um, as the three parcels um, for zoning. Um, and I really, I, I think um, in all of my notes, I, I've heard a lot from um, both, both perspectives. And I feel in this development, this has had the most, from my perspective, um, the most dedication and research into trying to hear residents and what their concerns and wants and needs are for this area by, by the, um, by, excuse me, by um, adhering to open space and preserving views. Um, that was listed in the presentation. I expect um, and will look for that to be in further processes. And I think that by the rest of the criteria, it meets um, attainable housing, protecting of historic resources. Um, this is really a, a start place in our, our city. Um, and I really believe that um, there has been some thought and real dedication to making this the most appropriate for what it can be. So, my vote will be yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, throughout these three, I mean, some of you happy and some of you bad. So, I'm, I'm gonna kind of lay it out now and then we vote on these three different items. I'm gonna be voting no on parcel B specifically. Um, I want to thank everybody, like my colleagues did, for coming out. I enjoy hearing from the residents. I think we have a very talented group of developers who uh, are bringing a project before us. I think, so much so that they probably will be able to overcome this particular parcel and still be able to deliver a quality project to Westminster. Um, however, I do not think that the B parcel for me um, means criteria eight as far as the transportation. Part eight is, or all repeat is the proposed amendment will not negatively impact transportation system, drainage, water, sewer, infrastructure, water supply, fire, police services, parks, open space, or the city general fund uh, revenue. And so specifically, I'm concerned about traffic with that one being away from the main arterial roads. I think that that could be a problem as well as number two, the proposed amendment serves a substantial public purpose, will not substant, substantially um, be detrimental to the surrounding lands. And I just don't see that fitting in that one with, with those other surrounding areas. Um, I, I like the other, other things for the same reasons. I think that, you know, their vicinity to the, to Federal and eighty-fourth, I think those are good developments. And I'm gonna be pleased to support that portion of it, but I will not be supporting parcel B.
Ms. Colley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. As my, as with my fellow counselors, this took a lot of thought, a lot of processing. I want to thank everybody who came out and testified. I think it takes a lot of um, investment to come out and be heard and, and speak in public about your feelings and your concerns. That's why I applaud you. Thank you. Um, thank you for all of the facts that we threw at you pretty much on the, on the vine here, you know, just hoping you could answer them and thank you to city staff because you were tremendous in getting our questions answered quickly. I too tonight will be voting in support of all three amendments. And um, I want to explain why. I really went through this. I took into consideration three things. I looked at the comp plan. I looked at the planning commission's comments and their vote. And I looked at these standards that we are held to uphold. The, the planning commission approved it, a seven zero vote. The comp plan, it is an adjustment. It is an amendment. But our comp plan is a live document and it is coming up for review again and will be a, a new comp plan coming out soon. And I believe that at that time, we will have to relook at our lands again. So, it came down to how do we meet these standards? And I had several questions as we went through these nights. I listened to the residents, I listened to the developer, I listened to the city and how um, how they answered certain questions for me. And it really came down to um, um, parcel B. The, the only question I had, originally I really sat on, we should just stay with a three point five. But what really swung me over was the idea that if we go to a five, we can create a smaller parcel, which will move the houses a little closer together and away from the other area. And that made a big impact to me, that with that flexibility, that makes a big difference in how that land will sit. I also really liked the idea, so I'm hoping that it was a truthful statement and it's going to be followed through with, is a park at the top. Um, I do go to that area. I drive Lowell all the time. It's my favorite fast route to Westminster. Um, it's not fast, it just has less traffic on it. Um, but I love to drive that and I love it because of the vistas. I love to look at the vistas. Um, I ride my bike out there. I've taken walks out there. I don't want those gone. Um, so I'm expecting that the open space, the view, the vista areas will be kept and that park will be in place. And that um, especially our residents who already have homes there will not be losing their views because I think that's really important. I understand that people buy homes because of the beautiful views they have. Um, but I also was thinking about when I was walking um, last summer in residence areas and talking to different residents and I happened to be in the Highland Green area. And I was up on top of a hill and I was very impressed with how the houses were built on that hill and how well I could still see three sixty of the city. And I thought, and that's what this is all about, is that we don't limit ourselves. We, we plan that growth. We figure out how to keep those vistas. We figure out how to keep that open space because that is what's important to us. The reality is we still need rooftops as well and we need to provide those rooftops for our missing middle. And I know that the missing middle's cost is quite high. I'm not sure we have a middle anymore. I think we have high and we have low. But this is a chance for us to try to see if we can be creative and we can be different and hit that missing middle. So, traffic was a concern, but I felt that the city really addressed that. Thank you, Mr. Klein. I also felt that the developer also is aware of that traffic concern and has ideas. I really liked the idea of a tunnel under Federal. I don't know whose idea that was, but I really liked it. So, I'm hoping that is also a true statement. And the water, the water is always a concern. And we're banking a lot on what we're being told is correct and that the estimates are correct and we're going to be able to make it. I know this was already considered in our water cost. So I believe that we will have enough water and so that was in the end not a real big question for me. So that is how I got to this. D, I will be approving, but I guess I can discuss that later because we're on B.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief and honor everyone's time tonight. But since B is in front of us, I'll leave my comments to that. I will be voting against this because I find that criteria number two, that it does not serve a substantial public purpose. And also criteria three, this will change the nature of the neighboring areas. So we'll be voting against B.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all for being here. Thank you, staff, for all of your hard work for a couple nights worth of being with us. Thank you applicants for all of your work and coming here and being here tonight. And then especially residents, for you are here and shared their thoughts and their concerns. And through this process, it was clear that you love your neighborhood and this is a city made up of great neighborhoods. So, I will say that I will not be supporting this. So I will be a no vote on this particular motion. And my reasons include criteria number two, proposed amendment serves substantial public purpose and will not substantially detrimental or be detrimental to surrounding lands. I know that doesn't add up for me. So, the two criteria, number two and number eight. So I will be voting no for those two reasons tonight. Thank you.
The standpoint of where we're at right now, we've gone through a huge process for an application that's in step one. We have a number of steps regardless of what item these three. If they pass, then there is still the PDP, zoning fee, and a station closing. What has been committed to verbally by the applicant, we have checkpoints on each one of those. See, what you have told us here at the public hearing, if that's the finding, that you're living up to those problems. And any one of those points, if you're not, probably going to lose them. But very frankly, we have people who are invested a lot of time, staff. I could find no fault with the planning commission decisions. I could find no fault with what the staff said, they could recommend based on where we at or what we have in criteria for tonight. With that, I, like some of the others, I can find no reason not to support the motion that's before us. So that's two more. At this point, Ms. Parker, this is a roll call vote.
Counselor Demond.
No.
Counselor, Mayor Protent Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
No.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Bowles.
No.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
On this motion, if motion passes only four, three votes. Ball's a fine. Counselor, Bill Number Four. Mr. Demond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number Four on first reading to approve the proposed comprehensive plan amendment, parcel D, a request to change the land use designation from office to residential R-8. This recommendation is based on the finding that the amendment generally meets the criteria set forth in Section 11-5-21B of the Municipal Code.
Ms. Scully.
A second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion by council? If not, this is a roll call vote, Ms. Parker.
Mayor Protent Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demond.
Next item on the agenda is Counsel Bill Number Five. Demond.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to pass Counsel Bill Number Five on first reading to approve the proposed comprehensive plan amendment for parcel E, a request to change the land use designations from office to private parks and private open space. This recommendation is based on the finding that the amendment generally meets the criteria set forth in Section 11-5-21B of the Westminster Municipal Code.
Ms. Scully.
A second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on Counsel Bill Number Five? Ms. Parker, this is a roll call vote.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Bowles.
Yes.
Mayor Atchison.
Yes.
Counselor Demond.
Yes.
Mayor Protent Sights.
Yes.
That motion carries only seven votes. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the business part tonight. As far as with council actions, I do need a motion from the council before we adjourn in order to extend the previously approved council meeting by thirteen minutes.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. This is the first hearing. Please, it's time of the council by thirteen. Morning's late, you're per hearing here tonight.